Good evening, this August fourteenth, two thousand and twelve meeting is called to order. This meeting is in compliance with the open meeting law. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel Two, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at ten AM, the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at five AM and six PM. If you could please now join with us and say the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Quinn?
Here.
Vice Chair Flengus?
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Truesale?
Present.
Commissioner Goines?
Present.
And Commissioner Bonnar?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and the review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can go on and have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Number four is the public comment. All comments made under this item for specific action, items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? If so, come now. If not, we'll be moving on to number five. Thank you. Now, we're going to look for a motion for the meeting of July tenth, a motion to approve the minutes of that meeting. Vice Chairman Flengus?
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of July tenth, two thousand and twelve.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Schlotman, did you vote it yes?
Yes.
For some reason, didn't, I registered, thank you.
And I've not casted a vote.
You haven't?
I've not.
And I apologize, was that in the affirmative as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, we'll be moving on to now item number six. Any items from the planning commission, staff, and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and act upon at this time. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. I don't believe that we have any this evening, staff.
Chairwoman Quinn, there are no housekeeping items.
No housekeeping items, okay. So, hearing none, Commissioner Flengus, could you please make a motion on the items?
Actually, we don't need a motion.
Oh, we don't even need a motion, so we'll just skip right along from there. Prior to the one motion, one vote, I'm going to let all of you know that item number thirteen is going to be pulled and held for discussion this evening. So, there's people here that wish to speak on that item, so we will give you ample time in just a few minutes. The following are items that may be considered in the one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the planning commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from the part, this part of the agenda. Starting with item number seven, which is SUP four-five-nine-one-three. The applicant is Radio City Pizzeria. The owner is Artemis W. Ham III. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed three thousand two hundred and fifty square foot tavern, limited establishment at five oh eight Fremont Street, C-two, commercial zone, Ward five, staff recommends approval. The next one is number eight, SUP four-five-nine-three-four. The applicant is Park on Fremont LLC. Owner is Artemis W. Ham III. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square foot zone, square foot tavern, limited establishment at five hundred and five oh six Fremont Street. It's a general commercial zoning, and this is in Ward five, Councilman Barlow. The related items of number nine and ten are as follows. SUP four-five-nine-four-nine, applicant GMRI Incorporated. Owner Centennial Center. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed supper club at sixty-one ninety-one Centennial Center Boulevard, Town Center Zone, G-C dash T-C, general commercial dash Town Center, special land use permit. This is in Councilman Ross's Ward, and staff again is recommending approval. The related item is number ten, SDR four-five-nine-seven, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed seven thousand six hundred and sixty square foot supper club with a waiver of the Town Center Development Standards to allow an eleven-foot front yard setback where fifteen feet is required. Staff is also recommending approval on this. And then, we'll go on to number eleven. SUP four-five-nine-fifty, applicant is Downtown Hipster LLC. Owner N-Ecall LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed five thousand twenty square foot urban lounge at ten seventeen Fremont Street, Suite number one eighty, general commercial zone. This is in Councilman Coffins' Ward. Number twelve is an SUP four-five-nine-six-two. Applicant is Marcus Sgrizzi, spelled S-G-R-I-Z-Z-I. The owner is Centennial Gateway LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler on sale establishment within a proposed two thousand eight hundred and eighty-one square foot restaurant at fifty-seven oh five Centennial Center Boulevard, Suite one seventy, in Councilman Ross's Ward. Skipping over number thirteen, we move on to number fourteen, which is SDR four-five-eight-eight-six. Applicant owner is JWB Nevada Investment Serif Series C LLC. For possible action on a request for a major amendment of site development plan review, SDR four-one-seven-seven-one, for a one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two square foot tutoring center where one thousand four hundred and ninety-two square feet of tutoring center was already previously approved at four oh four South Jones Boulevard. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward. Number fifteen is SDR four-five-nine-five-five. Applicant owner is Las Vegas ICE LLC. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to an approved site development plan review, SDR four-one-six-zero-one, to increase the height of an improved ten-floor, one hundred and thirty-one, two hundred and twenty-eight square foot building to eleven floors and one hundred and forty-three, four hundred and ninety-eight square feet at the southeast corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Clark Avenue. This is in Councilman Coffins' Ward. Councilman, Commissioner Flengus, may I have an action?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, before we do that, is anybody here that wishes to come and speak on any of these items? Not number thirteen yet, we're going to do that after this, after the vote. If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll have a motion on the one motion, one vote.
Madam Chair, I just need to disclose with regards to item eleven, I do own an interest in a property within the notice area, but not affected any greater or less by the action taken by this board, so I will vote on it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
And Madam Chair, on item number eleven, SUP four-five-nine-five-zero, I constructed the gray shell. I also own a bar and have financial commitments with the property owner, so I will be abstaining on this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Flengus, sir.
Madam Chairman, as to the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda, I move to approve items seven through twelve, and items fourteen and fifteen.
Thank you, please cast your votes.
It disappeared from my screen prior to voting.
Did you want me to vote you in the affirmative? With the notation that you're abstaining on item eleven?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and that motion passes.
Madam Chair, items seven through twelve, and fourteen and fifteen are all final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you, Director. And now, we're going to go back to item number thirteen, which is SNC four-five-seven-five-eight. Applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a street name change from Chief Andre Rochat Place to Stanley W. Cooper Place. This is in Ward three, Councilman Coffins' Ward. Staff is recommending approval on this, and staff, may we have your recommendations, please?
Chairwoman Quinn, the only street segment bearing the current name exists between Sixth and Seventh Streets, one block south of Bridger Avenue. There are no properties with an address on this street, as the proposed street name change is in conformance with the city's street naming regulations and will not impact existing businesses or residences. Staff recommends approval of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Gepke Key. And now, thank you, and now we'll open it up to public comment. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Doyle Decker. I'm the chief deputy United States Marshal for the District of Nevada. We are here today asking that the name be changed on the street of Chef Andre Rochat Place to Stanley W. Cooper Place in honor of our fallen court security officer who dedicated his life to serving the community.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Is there anything else you'd like to say about Mr. Cooper?
Mr. Cooper was shot and killed when a man entered the lobby of the courthouse in the Lloyd George Federal Building. This man who entered the building, Mr. Wicks, opened fire with a shotgun, killing Stanley Stanley Cooper dedicated his life to serving this community, and we feel that it is proper and correct that this name be changed in his honor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. I know this is a difficult thing for you to speak on, and I'm sure Mr. Cooper's looking down on you and happy that you're taking the time, so, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I'm opposed to this, simply because there'll be a lot of other streets that, new streets that'll have adequate, there'll be adequate opportunities to address Mr. Cooper's heroic actions by naming a street after him. But to change a street, I just, I'm just opposed to that, on the general principle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Felipe. A Ortiz, six one one seven Ridge Carne Avenue, City of Las Vegas. Just for the record, I personally spoke to Chef Andre Rochat three days before the date of the letter, and he was honored and agreed to this change, and in fact stated that Deputy Stanley W. Cooper deserved this more than he did. And so, he will also be presented with the street signs, should this be approved today and on the city council. So, just wanted to note that for the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ortiz. If there's no one else here that wishes to speak on this item, we'll close the public hearing. Is there anybody on the commission that would like to speak on this? Mr. Commissioner Flengus?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd also like to point out, number one, that the street that's being named after Mr. Cooper is right across from the courthouse, so I think it's very appropriate to rename that street. Number two, I'd like the record to know that United States Marshal Cooper served twenty-six years with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, as well as sixteen years as a deputized court officer, and I strongly approve this measure.
Madam Chair, just one last comment. I agree with everything that Commissioner Flengus just said, and also, this won't be change in the addresses of any residents in that neighborhood, and so, I strongly support this name change.
Thank you. With that, I think we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Flengus?
Madam Chairman, I move to approve item number thirteen, SNC four-five-seven-five-eight.
Thank you, that motion is for approval. Please vote.
City Clerk, my button disappeared.
Madam Clerk, are you going to vote for him? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. There we go. Thank you, and that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to city council on September the nineteenth.
Thank you, Director. We're going to move on now to our public hearing items, starting with number sixteen, which is SUP four-five-five. Say something? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me, we're moving on now to item number sixteen, which is SUP four-five-five-three-one. The applicant owner is Dante and Belinda Devano. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed community residence with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from another community residence where six hundred and sixty feet is required at fifty forty-one North Cimarron Road Residential Estates Zone. This is in Councilman Anthony's Ward four. Staff is recommending approval. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, this item was held in abeyance in order for the applicant to host a neighborhood meeting. That meeting was held on August seventh, and the results of that meeting are in your blue sheets. The community residence is defined as a residential family-like living arrangement for five to ten unrelated individuals with disabilities or in need of mutual support furnished by other residents, as well as the support services, if any, provided by the operator of the community residence. Residents may be self-governing or supervised by a sponsoring entity, or staff, which furnish rehabilitative services related to needs of the residents. Interrelationships among residents are a essential component of a community residence. A community residence shall be considered a residential use of property for purposes of all zoning codes. Staff supports the applicant's waiver request as the larger lot and lower residential density help reduce the impact of the community residence, and that there are no other community residents other than the community residence at seventy-nine twenty-five West Rosado Way within three thousand feet of the proposed use. The availability of public services in the area will not be negatively affected by the waiver request. Staff recommends approval of this request, as it can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding uses.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Is the applicant here to speak on this item? Good evening. If you could just state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Belinda Devano, and I'm the applicant and the owner of this fifty forty-one North Cimarron Road. The address is fifty forty-one North Cimarron Road, and we are, as explained, we are asking for permit, a special use permit for a proposed community residence with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separating from other community residents where six hundred and sixty feet is required. The address of this property is fifty forty-one North Cimarron Road, and the existing residence care home is Life Share Care Home Nevada, Inc., at seven nine twenty-five West Rosado Way, which we both owned. The property located on fifty forty-one North Cimarron Road will be under the same company ownership, and it will provide a safer and comfortable home for the elderly, disabled persons, and persons with chronic illnesses. This community residence has the capacity to hold up to ten residents and will be staffed with two healthcare workers providing residents. As with other community residents, it will need a state and business license. Dante, my husband, I, and Caroline, my daughter-in-law, are registered nurses, owned and have a long experience in taking care, supervising residential care homes, and have been in outstanding operation for several years. This project meets and supports existing city planning fire department, Las Vegas Health Department regulations, as well as the regulation of healthcare and quality compliance. The proposed use can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious way, well-suited with the existing residents surrounding. Both the site itself and the landscape will be maintained. The subject site is physically suitable for community residential care home facility. The community residence has the space capacity of around three thousand square feet, seven rooms, and three full bathrooms to accommodate all ten proposed clients. There are up six parking spaces and large driveways to drop off and pick up. The approval of this special use permit at the site will not compromise public health or safety and welfare of the surrounding neighborhood. It will continue to be part of the beauty of the neighborhood. We have conducted a community meeting last August seventh, two thousand and twelve, and some of the concerns are the water use, the septic tank, the mentally ill patient, and the parking space. We are sharing our well water supply with other two neighbors. We clarify this issue to the Division of Water Resources, and according to them, the maximum usage is one thousand gallons per day each house, and in order to monitor our usage, we will install a sub-meter specific to our house. With regards to septic tank, we have approval from the Southern Nevada Health District for this residential home. About the mentally ill patient, I will attach this waiver in my license. To guarantee this attachment, you can check in the website or call to Nevada State Health Division Bureau of Healthcare Quality and Compliance once I got my license. For parking lot issue, we have sufficient lot for parking areas, and besides, we have to comply with the requirements of SCQC in order to get a license.
Thank you for the nice presentation. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward now.
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Is one of the conditions that they hook up to city sewer?
Mr. Rankin, Mr. Lucian?
I'll defer to public works.
Through you, Madam Chair, I'm just checking the conditions here. I don't believe, and the answer is no, there's no condition to connect a public sewer.
I believe that there should be a condition put on there that they hook up to city sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, come forward. If there's more than one of you, we do have two microphones, and we can make two lines. If not, we can just, just one of you speak, and that's fine. Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about SUP four-five-five-three-one.
Please give us your, I'm sorry.
My name is Cass Palmer, and I live at fifty twenty-five North Cimarron Road. So, I live in the house two doors down from the proposed group home, and my backyard butts up against the existing group home. I'm the young one in the neighborhood, I've been there for twenty-four years. Most of our neighbors that are here tonight and that we've been talking with over the year, over the last few days about this issue, been over there thirty-plus years. We adamantly oppose and wish for you to deny this SUP. We have one group home in the area already that butts up against us, and the zero lot line concept does not play. The six sixty-foot spacing requirement is there for a reason, to maintain the density for our neighborhood. We're in a rural neighborhood. We lived there for twenty-four years, and we happen to like the atmosphere there. The existing group home denies that atmosphere already. We've been good citizens, we've allowed that first, we didn't have any choice, allowed the first group home in. But the group home comes with a lot of issues, all the way from excessive traffic, nonconforming looks of the house in the neighborhood, the driveway is not residential-looking, the landscaping, ninety-nine cent trees are not nice-looking, the backyard, the butts up against my backyard is a disaster, dead trees, not well-cared-for at all, broken fence pilasters that are broken and laying in the street for months on end, waiting for repair. Recently, the single one was repaired. But the house itself is just in disrepair, and the landscape is nonconforming for our We've been the good citizens, we've let go of the beer cans, we let go of the ambulances, we let go of all the noise and the continuity of the problems associated with that existing home. To add another home adjacent to it, not a hundred feet from my home, would be disrespectful to the community and to everyone living in the area. From the get-go, the applicant has lied to us. He thought, he told us that he was coming to live into the home himself as his primary residence. We welcomed him into the community, and then, lo and behold, from day one, he's been designing this house for a group home unbeknownst to us. There are other multiple group homes in the neighborhood. We live in an area where we're popcorn with city islands and county inner space, there's county homes nearby, less than a half mile away. There are too many group homes in the area is the issue, and the density has to be maintained. There's just no pride in ownership. Three of us, the property in question, the next property down, and my property, the three of us share a well. The gentleman in question, the applicant, is and has been, two months in arrears on his well payments, and continues to be in arrears, is not a good homeowner, and the new property, again, ninety-nine cent bushes coming in, tore down all the existing mature landscaping, cypress trees, twenty-foot tall, took them out. The driveway up front, he can't even park his car into the entire property. He leaves the butt end of his car out in the easement, just because of the way he's designed his landscaping and his drive. But it's a matter of pattern and practice, he's not been fair to us, he's not been open with us, and the six sixty, the density of having a second home in a particular area is just too much for us to handle, and we adamantly oppose the request for SUP four-five-five-three-one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Palmer. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Maya Bowser, and I live at forty-nine fifty North Cimarron Road. I am definitely a newbie compared to my cohorts behind me that are speaking and opposed to this zone variance. My husband and I bought two and a half years ago, and prior lived one mile south off of Cimarron. Again, opposed to this zone variance, everything that Mr. Palmer had said is absolutely true for aesthetic pleasing, for compliance, as far as what the property owner had said. She's done her homework, she's absolutely supported her idea, but it is a business. What she is doing, and their family is doing, is a business, and this is a residential, and we bought in residential, and we would like to stay residential. My husband and I are both CASAs for the county, city, and we've done this for two years, and there are group homes already in our neighborhood for CASA families. It continues to grow in our neighborhood. We did not purchase our home two and a half years ago to live in a community. We are young parents, our kids are in high school at Centennial, and we would like to keep it a residential area. She has done her homework, she knows what she's talking about, but again, it is a business, and it's just, she wants to grow her business bigger, and we are definitely opposed to it, and we would like for you to really think about the growing community in Las Vegas, that parents and families would like to keep their property, and to be able to expand their families and live in a community that we have a grass and a backyard, not someone else butted up against us, and just for a business that in residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowser. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission Members. My name is Philip Courtney, I live at seventy-nine forty Rosado Way. I live in the house directly across the street from the existing home. Just one thing that happens with this density is, my wife had, my daughter came in and said, one of the ladies across the street wants to know if you have, if I have any tampons or cigarettes, and a few days later, my wife sees, doesn't realize it's the same lady, asks, can you, can you take me to the store to get some tampons? Well, my wife, this is a stranger, of course, in our neighborhood, where people have lived there for twenty years, she's a trustworthy person, but point being that, she ended up taking her there, and all she bought was cigarettes. The best care provider is going to have people that fall through the cracks, they, it's something that happens. I feel like the density, the six hundred and sixty feet was incorporated so that those types of things are minimized. If we allow a cluster-
If we allow a cluster, let's say, and set a precedence and say, okay, it's okay to get rid of the 660 feet, where is that going to allow somebody else to come back in and say, look, they got to do it, we get to, you know, we get to do it too, we'll match what they have? One of the other things I'd like to mention is, that was mentioned also, was the taking ownership in it. I'd like, I don't know if I can, if there's a way that I can show these photos?
Could you put that on the area? If you put it right down there, we should probably be able to see it. Is that the right spot? There you go. If you could turn it sideways.
That way.
There, there, there you go. What are you going to show us here, Mr. Courtney?
This is the backyard of the house that they're proposing to turn into a community home.
Okay.
This one here...
Was that the swimming pool before?
Yes, ma'am, that was the swimming pool before.
Okay.
The next, the next two are photos of the existing home.
That, that's the, that's...
That's the backyard of the existing community home.
What, Byron? You know, you could place all four of them down, and then we could kind of look at them consecutively versus just one at a time, you know what I mean? So, so we've gone through the one that was the pool, and then this is the backyard, and then what's this bottom one here on the corner?
This, this one here is also the existing home, the backyard of the existing community home.
There's the microphone right underneath, above you, so you can enjoy...
This one here is the community home, right here. Existing community home, this is the backyard. This is the backyard of the community home, also.
And there's residents in these now?
Yes, ma'am, these, they have, they are operating their community home.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to leave those photos?
Yes.
For the record, and give them to the Madam Clerk, please, for the, for the record? That would be good. I think that's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Courtney.
Thank you.
At the risk of sounding redundant, but I think it's, it's important to repeat that it's about density and the 660 feet. That's why taverns have, have separations and separations from schools and things like that.
Right.
It's all about density, and I appreciate if you would consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Excuse me one minute, sir. Madam Clerk, could you pass those along so we could see them before we vote, if you don't mind? Thanks. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Lysing. I'm a research hydrologist with the Water Authority. I, among many people here in the audience tonight, oppose the granting of this waiver.
I'm sorry, sir, what was your address?
4930 North Cimarron.
Okay.
The, I could read off of this, but in essence, we oppose it because granting the waiver could, would prove detrimental to our neighborhood, and we've got a list of reasons here as to why, and I'll give each of you a copy. But the, the purpose of this, as the others have alluded to, the purpose of a 660-foot separation is to minimize the population density of people who might otherwise cause a disruption in the neighborhood, or a business that might otherwise cause a disruption in the neighborhood. This list of specific concerns that I will read to you and then give to you are based on their experience. There are a number of people here, they all have stories that relate, anecdotal stories that relate to the specific contacts with the individuals in the house. But in essence, they're this: increased or threatening contacts between the community home occupants and neighborhood residents, more frequent emergency responses and presence of emergency vehicles, continued criminal or nuisance activity and associated police responses, continued, what, what our concern is, main concern is continued expansion of the facilities and increased number of occupants through the granting of additional waivers once this one is granted. This is our one opportunity to present our opposition. Once this, once this house is in place and the waiver is granted, we don't hear about any other changes that are going to be taking place. But these could include expanding existing buildings, increasing the number of occupants by expanding the building, acquisition of adjoining properties, once the waiver has been granted for one, what about the other one on the other side? We're trying to avoid an apartment here in the neighborhood. Changes in the nature of the occupants. If the license changes, you get a different set of occupants. It doesn't have to be retirees, it doesn't have to be kids in need, it could be anything, anyone who is qualified to receive disability and these types of, of, and that type of support. There's, of course, increased traffic, and then, one concern is greater likelihood of special assessments once you have a number of handicapped people. So, there are a number of these things. Many of the changes are not something we'd see or hear about until after the fact. So again, we strongly oppose it. I'll give you a list of these things, they read better than I state them.
Did you make a copy of that for us?
I've got six copies, and I also have a list...
Could you please give that to the clerk?
I also have, have 50 signatures.
Okay.
Or more, actually, I expect.
Great.
Of people who oppose this adamantly.
Okay, thank you very much. If you could please give that to the clerk for the record, we appreciate it, and we appreciate your time, sir. Thank you.
Here you go. There's another one.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Zay. I live at 5033 North Cimarron, and I would like to underscore a point made today. I'm, I'm one of three people on this well, and it's shared by three of us. And if we feel that having a house for 10 residents plus two staff members is going to severely increase the usage of that well, forcing us to go on city water, sewer, et cetera, and that's going to create a hardship on, on our family. I know that the well point was brought up earlier, but I thought I'd underscore that.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Very much. There's no one else that wishes to speak on this item? We're going to close the public comment now, and we're going to open it up for the planning commissioners to speak on. Would you like to start, Commissioner Flengus?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to preface my remarks by stating that I'm adamantly opposed against this project. The reason is, we have an ordinance that says 660 feet. I really don't see any compelling reason to step away from that ordinance of 660 feet. In my opinion, to allow this to go will start to change the character of that neighborhood, and in addition to that, will set a bad precedence. All the other things that are said are, are definitely militate against this, but the most important thing here is, there's just absolutely no reason to deviate from the ordinance. With that said, again, I'm opposing this measure.
Thank you, Commissioner Flengus. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the item? Miss Commissioner Bonner, sir?
A couple of questions of clarification.
Could the applicant please come to the microphone? They have some questions for you, ma'am.
It might, might be of staff, Madam Chair.
Or of staff.
That's all right.
Please, thank you.
The septic field that's there, do you know if it's going to be enlarged to meet the number of residents in this second place?
Madam Chair, woman through you. I don't know that for sure, but I do know that they'll have to get a septic tank permit from the Health District. That's who issues the septic tank.
Okay.
And as far as requiring the public sewer, if they're not closer than 400 feet, the city does not require them to connect to public sewer, and they're much farther away than 400 feet from an existing public sewer line.
The well, the three-party well, is the existing residents, community residents on that, as well as the proposed residents this evening?
That I would have to defer to the applicant, I don't know.
Madam Chair. Can we ask the applicant the status of those three-party well?
Absolutely, go ahead. Sure.
Is the house you already own and operating as a group home also on the same well as the one that you're seeking?
No. It's not, Commissioner.
You, you mentioned something about a well that you're sharing with somebody, right? Which, which property are you sharing that with?
The 5041, the one that we're asking for a special use permit.
I don't, I don't know it by address.
The one that we're sharing right now is the property 5041, the one that we're asking to get a special use permit.
So the same well for both houses that you own?
No, different. The, the care home that is existing right now, we're sharing it with the other homes, not the same with these two residents, no, it's a separate one.
Okay, how many, how many residents are in your existing home?
We have a permit, a license for 10, but we have six residents right now.
So you have a license for 10?
Yes.
Did you do anything special about the, about the water service in that unit?
No.
Did you do anything special about the septic system for that unit?
No.
What did you do with the Health Department regarding the 10-person occupancy relative to the septic system?
We, we get the zoning, and we get the license, and we were approved because there is no, there is no limitation in the distance, there is no other care homes within the neighborhood, so they just gave us a special, a license right away. This one happens because there is a distance limitation, a regulation, so we have to get a special use permit.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll pass for now, at least.
Can I ask, can I say one more?
No. Commissioner Flengus, did you have something to say?
I just wanted to ask staff, it, it, it seems like you said that this doesn't meet the conditions, but why do we recommend approval when clearly on your backup report, it says the, the use meets all the applicable conditions of Title 19.12, except for the 660-foot distance separation? So I'm just curious how we, how to get to approval.
Well, when considering a community residence, it's not the impact of the, community residents are considered a single-family home use pursuant to federal law. And in considering the distance waiver separation as set by council, we look at the impact of the community residence to the other community residence. If there's not enough services, let's, for instance, if there, this was the fourth community residence to be located next to another three community residents, there may be a concern that there may not be sufficient city services for those residents in those group homes. So when looking at the, at the distance separation and the saturation, it's in regards to other community residents within the neighborhood itself, how they affect each other, not how they affect the other single-family homes in the area, and that's pursuant to federal law and the findings of the Fair Housing Act.
Okay, so then that begs another question, then, because from the, you know, I, that, that's an interpretation, but I look at it from, from a visual. I mean, they're representing this as a business, but as I look at those pictures, do we at some point go out and look at these businesses and say, you know, it's atrocious? I mean, aesthetically, the way your business looks, I mean, I don't think this is the way we want business to represent the city of Las Vegas. I mean, looking at that property, boy, if I could shut it down, it'd be closed tonight.
Commissioner, if I may, Commissioner, unfortunately, the residential group care facilities are, are considered to be family residences, not businesses, under the Fair Housing Act, as well as the ADA, so, but we could call code enforcement, there are some code enforcement issues with regard to the way the properties are being kept, with regard to debris and things like that, which may pose a danger to not only the residents, but other people in the community.
Yeah, correct, because I, I mean, if it's, if it's that type of, of business, I would think, as part of that, you want to have a, a nice surrounding so your residents can go out and enjoy the environment that they live in, but I have to put on a pair of steel-toed boots and a helmet to go out in the backyard there.
Before we go on any further, I, I would like to ask staff if code enforcement could visit this residence as soon as possible. I, I don't think it's safe for the residents that are in there now.
Madam Chair?
You know...
You may want to ask the applicant what she plans to do in terms of, you know, making those improvements.
Yeah. Miss applicant, could you stay up here, please, until we're finished? Okay, so...
I strongly agree you can go and visit right now. I strongly agree that you send somebody to go and check right now.
You do?
Yes. Those pictures are taken on the property when it's not renovated and it's not licensed yet. You know, the property in 5041, it was a mess, it's a very broken, very bad property when we, when we bought that, and we took the pictures. Right now, you can visit, even that 5041. I don't know, it doesn't look good with them, but that's what the planning and the Department of Health wants us to do with our, with our loan, with our, with the front of the loan.
Okay, listen, I'm not here to get in an argument with you. I'm just saying that I am, have, has the City of Las Vegas come out and inspected your property?
Yes.
Not the Health Department, not anybody else. I'm talking about Neighborhood Services or something, is anybody?
Oh, yeah.
They have been out there, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So we're sending them back, just so you know.
Yes. We have a spokesman that goes there.
We're not going to go back and forth. Does anybody else here wish to make a, a statement? If not, we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Flengus.
Madam Chairman, as to item number 16, SUP 45531, special use permit, I'm moving to deny this based on that there's absolutely no reason to deviate from the 660-foot separation requirement of the ordinance.
Thank you. That motion is to, is for approval, or is to deny the approval of this project. Thank you. And the motion for denial passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Okay, so that's final action. Okay, thank you. We're going to move on right now to item number 17, zoning 45952. Applicant owner is RES Nevada 1 LLC. For possible action on a request for rezoning from U undeveloped R Rural Density Residential General Plan designation to R1 Single Family Residential at the northeast corner of Ann Road and Maverick Street. This is in Councilman Ross's ward, and staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we please have your report?
Madam Chair, the applicant anticipates that the subject site will be subdivided to create 11 single-family residential lots, each over 11,500 square feet in size. The proposed request is in conformance with the R Rural Density General Plan designation, and the density is permitted, permitted with remain the same, and therefore, staff recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional protests and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Richard Turner, 67, 65 West Russell Road, on behalf of the applicant. We are in agreement with staff recommendations, and would like to note that this is a project that was previously approved in years gone past, and the current applicant is asking to build exactly what was originally approved and what had started construction.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on the item? If so, come forward. If not, we're closing the public hearing and opening it up to the planning commissioners.
Madam Chair, through you.
Yes.
Inasmuch as this was previously approved, I believe back in 2006 by city council, there's new ownership that did not get an extension, but as I've looked over this, the proposed R1 conforms with the Rural Density Residential designation, and I believe it's consistent with the surrounding residential land uses, so I will move for approval on this if there's no other comments.
Thank you. I don't think so, so we're ready for a motion. Mr. Moody?
I'll go ahead and move with regard to item 17, ZON 45952, for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Thank you, and that motion passes.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to city council on September the 19th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to number 18, zoning 45966. Applicant owner is Lonnie Watson. For possible action on a request for rezoning from RE Resident Estates to C1 Limited Commercial on 0.89 acres at southeast corner of Martin Luther King Boulevard and Madison Avenue. This is in Councilman Barlow's ward. Staff is recommending approval. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, the subject property is currently undeveloped. The proposed rezoning to C1 is compatible and consistent with the C Commercial Land Use designation of the general plan, and as such, staff recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant.
Terry Carter, 1825 Avocado, representing the applicant owner. For the record, the owner's name is Walston, not... For the record, the owner's name is Walston, not Watson.
Oh, I apologize, Walston. Madam Clerk, Walston. Thank you. Is there anything you wish to say on the?
Uh, we just go along with staff's, staff's recommendations for approval, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the item? If not, we'll close it and open it up to the planning commission. Uh, Commissioner Gwainz.
Madam Chairman, I will support the approval, I think this, um, just basically brings this piece of property in consistently with, uh, what's aligned along Martin Luther King, which is a commercial. With that, I'll move for approval of item 18, ZO N 45966, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Thank you, that motion is for approval, please cast your votes. Thank you, and that, uh, motion passes.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to City Council on September the 19th.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, moving on to number 19, variance 45809, the applicant is CFT Developments LLC, owner sharing family trust for possible action on a request for a variance to allow 69 parking spaces where 73 are required at 4416 East Bonanza Road, C1 Limited Commercial Zone. This is in Councilman Coffin's ward, may we please have the staff report?
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed variance will allow a restaurant to occupy a suite that previously held a retail use. The restaurant increases the overall parking requirement by four spaces which cannot be accommodated on the site, as the site cannot accommodate the required parking for the proposed, uh, proposed change of use, and no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to justify the request, staff recommends denial of the variance. Please note that there is an additional letter of support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepkeke, good evening, sir.
My name, my name is Justin Trent, I'm from CFT Development. This is Maria Figuera from Panda Express, who will be, uh, Panda Express, the franchisee of this location, this Yogurtland locations.
Good evening.
Good evening. We disagree with staff recommendations, uh, we feel that Yogurtland is a low-intense parking user, um, uh, their peak hours are usually after dinner times, 50% of our transactions happen after 7:00 PM when most of the other businesses are closed. Also, the, the, the average customer stays at, at the location for 15 minutes, so it's just really an in and out, and people just don't stay there like most restaurant space. We also have a letter from all the tenants of building supporting Yogurtland in these locations, I don't know if you have a copy of it yet, but I can just put it over there. In addition, Panda Express is a great operator in Las Vegas area, we have multiple locations here, uh, we expect to generate around $550,000 from this location and hire between 10 and 12 staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would also like to add that...
If you could please give us your name and address, sweetheart, for the record.
Yes. My name is Maria Figuera, and I am at the, um, same location, uh, 1683 Walnut Grove in Rosemead, California, and I would also like to add that, um, uh, the only operating restaurant that we have at the center is Panda Express, so, the other are retail, which would, um, retail tenants have less, uh, required parking allowance, so, I feel like, um, Yogurtland would be the second restaurant, and it wouldn't impact, um, the parking.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we're going to open it up to the planning commissioners, Commissioner Schlossman, sorry.
One sec, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to abstain on this item, and as much as, um, Panda Act is a tenant in a center that I manage, and I've dealt with Mr. Churn's family, um, on several of these locations, and this, since we do have some ongoing business, I, I felt it'd be appropriate to abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner Trusdale, Commissioner.
Yes, Madam Chair, I, as I was reading the backup information on this project, I, uh, a lot of the things that the applicant said today, uh, was ringing in my head, yogurt, short trips, 15 minutes in and out, um, the, uh, retail, and I'm sure most of your, um, customers are going to be coming in late in the evening, um, you know, so, we're down to four parking spaces, over 73 parking spaces, um, a, a four parking space deficit, so, I don't strongly, um, feel opposed to this, but I'd like to see if any of my fellow commissioners have any, uh, thoughts, and if not, I'd be ready to make a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Through you, I do, uh, have a question for the applicant. Uh, with regard to handicap spaces, does the proposal meet those requirements? I read through the backup documentation quickly but couldn't find it.
We have three parking, uh, handicap parking space at the locations, I think that staff, staff's approved it.
And again, through, through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Maybe I could ask staff if that meets the city requirements?
Three is required, and they have three.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Oh, turn it off.
Through you, Chairwoman Quinn, uh, the parking, handicap parking spaces required for the site is, is three.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Moody, for asking that question. I guess we're ready for a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, in reference to item 19, VAR 45809, variance, uh, due to the finance that I specified earlier, I would make a motion to approve, uh, this item.
Thank you, that motion has been made, and the motion is for approval, please cast your votes. Thank you, and, uh, that motion passes with Commissioner Trusdale abstaining.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on now to related items, number 20 and number 21, is variance 45850, applicant is Wells Fargo Bank, owner is C Eagle Spirit LLC, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow 343 parking spaces where 345 spaces are required at 2400 East Bonanza Road, limited commercial zone, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, um, staff is recommending denial on this first application, may we please have the staff report?
Chairwoman Quinn, these requests would allow the installation of a walk-up ATM with one van-accessible, uh, handicap parking space where three standard spaces currently exist, uh, at a site that is already parking impaired. The ATM could be located elsewhere on the site, that would not result in a reduction of available parking, and the applicant has presented no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance to justify the request, therefore, staff recommends denial. Please note that there is an additional letter of support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepkeke, good, uh, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Rob Jacknowitz, 2324 Hampton Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, here on behalf of Wells Fargo Bank. Um, the request before you is to add a walk-up ATM, the southeast corner of the shopping center. As you're aware, this is a, uh, established shopping center, been there since 1965. Wells Fargo currently has a drive-up ATM out of that facility. The reason we're before you tonight is that the existing drive-up ATM is being utilized by the residents in this neighborhood, mostly that live south of this site. And, uh, the request is because, or a large portion of our customers are walking up to the drive-up ATM. That's not a good situation. Myself, uh, Wells Fargo maintenance people, the security people that's, that, uh, that stocked the machine with money have all commented that there are people standing in the line between the cars. We have looked at this center extensively to try to find another location, uh, within it. Unfortunately, it was developed in 1965. There's no landscape beds to, to possibly add this to, there's no areas that are hashed off that are no parking or anything like that, unless, of course, you go all the way to the back of the shopping center, you know, where the truck docks are, but that, that doesn't make a lot of sense. We are loo- looking to locate it at the southeast corner, it's adjacent to Bonanza Avenue, it's well-lit, very visible location, it's close to the existing drive-up location there. There are tremendous amount of transactions that happened to the existing machine, um, it, it's well-used by the residents, most of the transactions occur, are people that live within a half-mile of this. They walk, will use our ATM, go into the shopping center, return back to south. Some of the other, uh, reason is that we're promoting both the drive-up use and the walk-up use. Other than that, the shopping center has 345 parking places, those were put in in 1965. Our request to lower that by two spaces, we feel, won't impact the center, these are remote spaces, they are farthest away from any of the front doors of any of the existing businesses, they're not utilized very much, uh, quite frankly, so, we feel that our request is, is reasonable and would, would request your approval of our application.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, if there's, if, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item, Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I oppose this simply because the applicant shows no foresight whatsoever. They had a beautiful bank building down there, which is now the pawn shop, had drive-up and everything else. They says, you know, that they can't make a bank there, you know, they're not, not customers, blank, blank, you know, whatever. Now here it is, a few years later, and they're coming up and saying that they, that their, their customers are underserved and they need some other stuff. I mean, where were these people a few years ago when they closed down the bank? I don't think they know what they're doing, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Farlow. Excuse me, one... I, I'm sorry, I'm going to go ahead and read the related item, 'cause I forgot, so, I'm going to do it right now, um, and that would be number 21, which is the SDR 45852, for possible action on a request for a site redol- redol- redevelopment plan review for a proposed standalone ATM with no drive-through located within the parking lot of an existing shopping center, staff again is recommending denial, um, and staff, you've already given us your report, which is the same, I, I suspect, correct? And, um, you've already made your presentation regarding this as well, sir? I should have read them together, I apologize, I just blew it.
The only thing, I guess, site-related I did not, uh, consists of the walk-up ATM, the protective ballards, um, and then we creating a handicap space adjacent to the machine, so that would be the site plan portion.
And it's well-lit and everything, okay, then we got Mr. Farlow's comments, we're back on track. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Seen nobody, okay, we'll open it up now to planning commissioner, to the commissioners. Commissioner, um, Schlossman, do you have something you'd like to, Commissioner Moody, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, my law firm is involved with, uh, litigation involving Wells Fargo, and out of an abundance of, of caution, I'm going to abstain on items 20 and 21.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Moody. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item?
For the applicant, uh, I understand your desire to put a, um, a drive-up ATM, I mean, a walk-up ATM. You don't maintain a branch in this facility, in this center, do you? So...
State branch.
Okay, so this was strictly a drive-up branch in the bank, 'cause not maintained it, uh, a branch location there, that you normally would have put it in the lobby?
Uh, no, actually, to clarify, there, there was a First Interstate Bank, uh, at the northwest corner of the property, when First Interstate bought Wells Fargo, uh, for whatever reason, that property was, was sold.
All right, and, actually, I don't disagree with where you want to locate it, except that's the pathway of all the heavy delivery trucks, that may create the same pedestrian experience you have now with, with drive, people in the drive-up, 'cause you've got 16-wheel trucks delivering to the loading docks in the back there and coming and go on, out of that section of the shopping center.
That's why we placed it as close as we could to the street, and it's, it's at that south property line, 'cause that was discussed, and, and, okay, are we creating another similar situation? And we felt that this was a better, um, situation, because those people, like you said, are now, there, there is that truck lane that goes across there, the applicant, or the, not the applicants, customers coming from the south going north would be able to use the machine, uh, and then get back on the public sidewalk, uh, which is safer to cross, you know, the access points of the shopping center.
All right, um, that's answered my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Schlossman?
Yes, Madam Chair, in, in regards to the walk-up ATM, uh, could it not be located directly behind the existing drive-up ATM? It looks like you have ballards out there already to begin with, you're not taking up additional parking spaces, and this variance might not be needed?
If, if you notice in that photo that you have up there now, I believe, that, that's showing the drive-up, which I don't, I'm just looking at Steve's screen and I can see it, I don't know if you guys have it, okay, um, we discussed that as possibility too. People tend to use the, the area to the right as a quasi-access drive, um, I, I don't know if it was ever designed for that or not, so, you have people that believe that are got, or go north and go south through there. So, we're, we're trying to minimize where a walk-up customer, try to make the, the best environment for them. That's definitely a possibility, we just thought having them cross that path of travel might not be the best scenario. That scenario, of course, then, wouldn't take any parking and we wouldn't be talking right now, it'd be just a, probably a building permit issue. We felt that this was probably the best scenario out of a very old shopping center.
And Madam Chair, through you, the exact location of the drive-through ATM on, on map, uh, would that be on the street fronting Eastern Avenue?
May I?
Currently?
Yes, you're correct, it, it faces onto Eastern.
And the, through you, Madam Chair, the proposed location would be in the northeast corner of the site?
Uh, no, it would be in the southeast corner of the site.
Okay, southeast corner of the site.
Sure. As close as we could get to Eastern.
And one, one last question, what, that looks like it's around the backside of the building, is that employee parking, or is there frontage to a business right there in that location?
No, the, the businesses all have, as you're aware, the, the shopping center is shaped like an L, uh, 90% of the parking is, uh, towards Bonanza, if I may, to the north of that. There are scattered spots such as these, um, all the way along Walnut there, along the back, there's two or three, groupings of two or three, uh, presumably for employees, however, there's no back entrance by these spaces, these generally go unused.
And one last question, I really haven't reviewed the conditions that closely, um, but for site lighting, because it doesn't look like the safest little corner right there, are there conditions to ensure that there's adequate site lighting?
Oh, yes, yes, not only city guidelines, there are existing parking lot standards there, we also have to comply with state regulations for our footprint as well.
Thank you, Commissioners, is there anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll entertain a motion, I guess, on this item.
Yes, Madam Chair, on variance, or item 20, variance 45850, I would make a motion, um, to approve, uh, based on the conditions.
Thank you, and that motion passes, showing that Commissioner Moody has abstained.
Thank you all very much.
We have one more.
Okay.
You have one more.
And Madam Chair, on item 21, SDR 45852, um, under the same assumptions of the ATM being located around the corner, uh, not directly where the customers are going to be parking, I would make a motion for approval.
Thank you, that motion is also for approval, please cast your votes. And that motion also passes, sir, showing Commissioner Moody abstaining on this item.
Madam Chair, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10
Madam Chair, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Moving on now to item number twenty-two, variance four five eight nine six, applicant owners, the City Hall LLC, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a lot width of forty-nine feet, where one hundred feet is the minimum required on a portion of one point one eight acres at two thirteen North Las Vegas Boulevard, APN one three nine three four five zero one zero two zero. C-two general commercial zone. This is in Councilman Barlow's ward. Staff is recommending denial, and may we please have the staff report?
Chairwoman Quinn, the subject site is a single lot containing two buildings that are proposed to be separated by a new property line. This will create two legal lots, one of which will be forty-nine feet wide, where one hundred feet is the minimum lot width required. As the proposed lot width does not meet Title nineteen oh eight zoning standard and the applicant has presented no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstance to justify the request, staff recommends denial of the variance. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepkeke. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Todd Kessler, three hundred North Las Vegas Boulevard, eight nine one oh one. On behalf of the applicant, City Hall LLC, this is just a really unique situation. This is basically, as part of our acquisition of City Hall, we acquired the TV studio and the parking garage to the north of it, as well as the main campus, which sits across on Stewart Avenue. And since Zappos, the tenant, has only taken everything from north of the garage, not including the TV studio, it's, it's left us with this piece that has a separate use and has, therefore, has many different issues when you go into Planning and Building Department. So we took the opportunity to see, to determine if we could do anything, and the best way to do it was to have a variance, was create a separate parcel. And because it wasn't a hundred feet wide, and only forty-nine feet wide, we needed a variance. And so it's really a cleanup issue from our City Hall perspective and our uses that we're using there. I have WRG representative here tonight, if there's some technical questions, I'm happy to answer those questions, sorry.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward now. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we're gonna open it up to the planning commissioners to speak on this item. Commissioner Goines.
Madam Chairman, I have no problems with this. I don't think it's a negative impact on any of the surrounding properties.
Is there anyone else that wishes to make a comment on this? If not, we'll enter, sir, Mr. Barlow, anybody? No? All right, we'll entertain a motion, then.
Move for approval of item twenty-two, VAR five four five eight nine six, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
I was working with staff on changing the condition number two, changing one word. I wanted to talk about that, and I apologize, I forgot.
Maybe we should do that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Condition number two states as follows. Again, we're gonna, it's our request that you approve subject to conditions, but condition number two says, prior to approval, any mapping action to subdivide the site, all shared site utilities shall be separated from the adjacent property as required by the Department of Public Works and Building and Safety. We want to change the word from as to if, so that would read as follows. Prior to approval of any mapping action to subdivide the site, all shared sites' utilities shall be separated from the adjacent properties if required by the Department of Public Works and Building and Safety.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask the applicant, what does that add to the condition?
If.
What's the difference?
We interpret it in one way, and we're concerned about the other interpretation. And so we've been trying to see about some common ground. We came up with a different condition that didn't meet staff requirements, and so this was kind of our middle ground.
Can you share what that, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I ask another question? Can he share what, what his interpretation of that condition is and what he thinks his if adds to it?
Yeah, absolutely, and then I was hoping Lucian would make a comment on that as well. So, how did you wanna go, Mr. Scott?
If he could just explain what his interpretation of the current condition is?
The applicant.
And explain his, his, his interpretation of the if add to the condition.
Oh, okay. So that would be, Mr. Kessler? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, sir. So he wants to know what you think it is with it and what it is without it?
It is our belief that it, in essence, as dictates or indicates that it, in essence, has to be done, and if is only if it's required by Building and Safety and Public Works. That's our interpretation.
Does that satisfy you, Mr. Scott?
I don't agree with that interpretation, but if he'd like to go with that, that's fine. But, I, I mean, if it's, if it's required, they'll make him do it. If it's not, they won't. The as, I think, and if are the same in this instance, but...
Lucian, did you have a comment on this, sir?
Madam Chair, person, Public Works would be okay with the if.
If.
If you so choose, it, it doesn't make a difference.
You're fine with the if and not the as? Okay. All right, then you wanna...
Thank you.
So therefore...
Byron?
Therefore, I will, again, make a motion for approval, but with the amended condition as read in by the applicant and, which is okay with Public Works.
Before we vote, Madam Chair, one question, just as you discuss utilities. Is there anything in this subdivision, this variance, that affects the agreements with the city with regards to this building?
I, I mean, I'll answer from our perspective. I won't answer from the city's perspective, but no. I mean, as far as our agreements with the financing side of things and all of those things, it was something that we discussed in our acquisition, but we couldn't accomplish it until after we acquired the property. I don't know if that's for the angle you were looking at.
As you know, Commissioner, that transaction was pretty complex, and I don't know what this one little thing of changing utilities would, would add or subtract.
No, I wasn't worried about the utilities, I was talking about the subdivision as a whole.
No, that, just, you know, the city's debt collateralizes against both parcels if that's the case.
It's never a problem till it's a problem, but that's fine. I will support.
Your lawyers are smart enough for that.
Thank you. Could we repeat the motion, then? Commissioner Goines, please.
My mo- my motion would be for approval of item twenty-two, VAR four five eight nine six, with the amendment of condition number two, to change the word as to if, and with Public Works approval, move for approval, subject to all of its standing condition.
Thank you, that motion is for approval with the change in the as from the if to the if. And that motion passes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Okay. That, that passes. We're moving on now to item number twenty-three, and this is variance four five nine one eight. The applicant is CIM LL Las Vegas LLC. The owner is two twenty North Fourth Street Las Vegas LLC et al., for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a projecting sign on a property containing a freestanding sign where such is not allowed, a projecting sign to project eight feet from a building where six feet is the maximum allowed, three projecting signs to be fifty-nine square feet, one hundred and five square feet, and fifty-one square feet where thirty-two square feet is the maximum allowed, a roof sign to be three hundred square feet and twenty-two feet above the roof line where one hundred and fifty square feet in area and eight feet in height are the maximum allowed, and to allow wall signage to cover twenty point four percent of the surface area of the north elevation of the east tower, forty-two percent of the surface area of the north elevation of the west tower, and thirty-seven percent of the surface area of the south elevation of the west tower, where twenty percent is the maximum allowed for each elevation at two oh six North Third Street, two twenty-one North Third Street, and two twenty North Fourth Street, general commercial zone. This is in Ward five, Councilman Barlow's ward. Staff is recommending denial on these variances. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, the signs are designed to fit the new...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I, I forgot to read twenty-four into the record, I get a little mixed up on these. And then number twenty-four is MSP four five nine one nine, for possible action on a request for a master sign plan for an existing hotel casino. Again, I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Rankin. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the signs are designed to fit the new theme chosen for the hotel, which mimics an east coast warehouse district. The most visible component of the plan is a series of large on-premise wall signs, including three that are four thousand six hundred and fifty-five square feet each, that would cover three elevations each of the two hotel towers. The area on the wall signs on the three, on three of the elevations exceeds the amount allowed by Title nineteen point zero eight, and a variance is required. In addition, some of the other proposed signs are not in conformance with height and area requirements and also require variance. As the signs could be designed to comply with Title nineteen requirements, and the applicant has demonstrated no hardship, staff finds that this is a self-imposed hardship and recommends denial of the variance, and thus, denial of the master plan. Note that DDRC has reviewed the signage and has recommended approval for the design. Please note, we have received additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, Mr. Kessler.
Three hundred North Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one on one oh one, here on behalf of the applicant, CIM LL. This is part of the sign package that's going forward with the Downtown Grand, which is the new rebranded hotel of the Lady Luck. There are a series of signs, as you see in your staff report. It is quite an extensive sign package, as you would on any casino hotel. The theme, as, as Mr. Rankin indicated, is a warehouse theme, and so some of the signs are basically against, or go against, some specific code because they're painted on, and there's certain things about a warehouse feel and look that are trying to be accomplished that don't comply with the current code. From the larger, larger signs with the percentage requests, those are signs that are going to be very, very, you know, unique signs. They're very similar to what was approved in relation to the world market, where there was variances requested to exceed the percentage requirement. Out of the six large signs, only three of them, again, go against the current code as relates to the percentage. And then of the other three that are, are above the twenty percent, there's one that's twenty point four, there's one that's thirty-seven percent, there's one that's forty-two percent. Just as a comparison, some of the world market signs that were approved were in the high nineties as far as percentage of the building elevation. This is, like I said, quite an extensive sign package, so there's close to thirty or forty signs in total, and we request approval subject to the staff's conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions. I have my sign team here as well with me today to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak about this item, please come forward now, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road, here today on behalf of Lamar Outdoor Advertising. At this time, we, on behalf of Lamar Outdoor Advertising, feel obligated to oppose this application, in so much as it relates to what we consider to be more super graphic or building wrap signage. That portion of the application is what we want to talk about today. This commission knows the history with those types of signs, the signs that cover a large portion of buildings. There have been a couple of ordinances before this commission that ultimately have been rejected and, and been sent back to the drawing board. Presently, there is a stakeholder group that is working through some form of an ordinance that may come before this commission, and we feel at this time that approval of this application would set the policy for things that we're discussing in that stakeholder meeting group right now. The only other thing I would like to point out specifically is, again, obviously, since I represent Lamar, we're very sensitive to what is on-premise, off-premise advertising, and since the Lady Luck won't be open for some period of time, or I should call it the Downtown Grand, won't be open for some period of time, prior to that time, it's impossible to advertise anything on-premise, because there's nothing inside the building to be on-premise. So, we are certainly sensitive to that, and we think perhaps a better approach to that is to do a temporary sign that would allow them to brand their property, but not do it through something that is advertising, something that isn't even open yet within the actual building itself. So, at this time, unfortunately, we are obligated to oppose this application.
Thank you, Ms. Lazovich.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Patrick Smith, representing Clear Channel Outdoor. I would just like to echo everything and, we'd like to echo everything that Ms. Lazovich said, and I'd also like to add that, again, it's just premature, we, we feel it's premature to approve this, this item with the Super Graphic Committee meeting just Thursday. The, the first committee meeting that we held last month really narrowed down a lot of the issues just to a handful. One of the issues being the number of sign faces per building. This item's approved tonight, you really made that policy decision in just one zoning item. We've met, again, in just one meeting, we've narrowed down the issues, like I said, to, to just a few. If you could perhaps delay this item and give us a little more time to, to get the super graphic issue behind us, perhaps this item could be a little better addressed with the stakeholder community. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I don't think it's bright enough, and I don't think there's enough neon.
Thanks, Todd. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Russell Rowe, here on behalf of Boyd Gaming Corporation, thirty-nine hundred Paradise Road, Suite two zero eight.
And sir, on behalf of...
Boyd Gaming Corporation.
Thank you.
I've stood before you on previous occasions with respect to ordinances pertaining to building wrap issues. I think we've been through four or five versions over the last several years. The last one, I think, this board actually refused to even introduce. Part of those reasons were for concerns of aesthetics on, in the downtown corridor and not reversing the tremendous gains and progress that's been made downtown, which Boyd Gaming is very sensitive to. We've worked very hard with our partners downtown, including the Planning Department, on coming up with solutions for the building wrap issue. The stakeholder group that Ms. Lazovich mentioned isn't just an informal group, that was brought together by your staff. We're reviewing a draft that was prepared, prepared by your staff, and we're having discussions, as has been mentioned, on this coming Thursday, with one of the issues being the number of building wraps that would be permissible on any building within the area that, where those would be allowed. What would occur if you approved this tonight is, one property owner would be allowed a certain number of signs, and potentially, the rest of us would be limited to a less amount. And one of the main concerns that Boyd Gaming has had throughout this issue over the years, one has been off-premise, and that's been addressed, it's not even on the table anymore, everything's talked about as being on-premise. The other is a consistent set of standards that we all live by, and that the playing field is even. It's all we've ever asked for. So if you prove this tonight, before we've had an opportunity to let the public process play out and come before you in the form of an ordinance and be approved by the city council, you're not gonna allow that common set of standards to be established. Really, what you'd be sending the signal to is for everybody on Fremont Street to come in and file their applications for signage right away before any ordinance is introduced, and so everyone can get what they can get, instead of having consistent standards for our community. So I'd ask you to consider that and figure out a solution to allow this application to go forward. We want to see the Downtown Grand open, we want to see it succeed, but we want to see all of us playing by the same set of standards. The stakeholder group includes the Fremont Street Experience, Executive Director, Mr. Jeff Victor, has been participating, so you have a pretty broad group of folks who've all been working in common to come on, come up with a common set of standards, so we're a little surprised to have this come on its own.
Thank you very much, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Ed Uhleng, I live in the, in the county.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last name?
Ed Uhleng, U-E-H-L-I-N-G.
Thank you.
I'm a little bit disturbed by, why not let businesses do what they want to do? The downtown is competing with the strip, it's competing with the whole world. If, if they want to do something like this, that's unique and, and that's going to be unique, let them do it. It is truly ironic, well, it's, it's, why do you let competitors come in and oppose these, these sorts of innovations? Let the, let those people... Let those people do it also. If the Fremont Street Experience has a big problem, why aren't they down here explaining what their big problem is? It's truly ironic that the Boyd Group is here when they have this monstrosity out on the strip. Would you like, would we like to see something, a continuation of that downtown? I mean, it's just incredible that they are coming and speaking about how a building that's being built, that's being finished and is going to be nice... I see you're frowning.
I just don't want to disrespect someone else's property.
It's so ironic that they would be here when they're going to be fixing up this building that's been sitting for years. And the Boyd Group has this thing out on the strip, which is a blight to the entire county and to the entire world. It's just unbelievable.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? And would you like to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to comment a little bit about some of Mrs. Lazovich's and Mr. Rowe's comments. You know, we've been part of that stakeholder process, and as Mr. Director Fag will know, you know, it's been a long process. It's been almost two and a half years probably since we've started that process. And I wish and hope that we could all agree to agree. We tend to, by nature, agree to disagree. And by that, I mean various stakeholders in downtown. And we tried. We tried our best for a year and a half, and that be the Lady Luck Group, to try and comply and create an ordinance. At that point, it was an on-off-premise discussion. But we, you know, they can't wait anymore. We would hope that these things would occur and come out. One comment I want to really focus in on was the potential that we're not in compliance with the current ordinance. Now, the current ordinance, again, is not here before you. It's not a law. It hasn't yet been voted on. It's my interpretation, again, that's my interpretation of the current draft, that we do comply. We have two separate structures on two separate parcels that are both above 10,000, above 10 floors and above more than 200,000 square feet. Now, that's very technical for everyone who doesn't have the ordinance in front of them here today, but I believe we do potentially comply with that ordinance. We are actually open for, as a casino, just to comment. Technically, we have 16 slot machines that exist. They're down in the mob bar. So we are an open facility. There's technicalities to that, of course, with what your definition of open is. But we are an open and active casino currently licensed as a non-restricted gaming entity in the state of Nevada. So I just wanted to share those comments with you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to say something? I'm going to go ahead and close the public. Here, Director Fag wants to say something.
Just to confirm the testimony that has been given here this evening, staff has been directed by city council to go forward yet again with a building wrap or supergraphic sign ordinance. We've put together a stakeholder group, similar to the one that we had several years ago, with members of the sign community as well as downtown property owners composing that stakeholder group. We've held one meeting to date. We have a second meeting scheduled for Thursday. I think that we're getting close in terms of finalizing the requirements of that. Probably need an additional meeting. One of the reasons why we don't refer to that is because this ordinance has not been finalized yet, nor has it been presented to the planning commission. And so consequently, we don't reference it in the staff report or refer to the standards as we're still in the process of developing those. And just on an added note, the ordinance that we are proposing will be limited to on-premise signage only.
And, excuse me, when is that meeting?
The next meeting of the stakeholder group will be on Thursday.
And will that be a final decision at that meeting?
I believe that we'll probably need one more meeting after that to finalize the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment, and we're going to open it up now to the, what? To the county commissioners, the planning commissioners, and we're going to start down here with Commissioner... Did you want to go? Truesdale?
Yeah.
Sorry?
I guess I was unaware that the stakeholders were meeting again to come up with a supergraphics plan. And quite candidly, based on the schedule the director has given, a 30, 45-day delay isn't something that I think affects the economics of your project. I mean, you're probably a year plus away from opening, or maybe sooner. I hope it's, I hope it's next week, but I don't believe it's going to be that soon. I think the supergraphics portion is the only portion of this application that has created any heartburn for anybody. Unless I'm wrong, the other commissioners can speak. But when this came before the DDRC, it wasn't mentioned that the stakeholders were back again at the table. And I believe it's important to have a whole decision. As Mr. Rowe represented, you know, they're a hotel operator. They're a player at the table. I think everybody else may have a different agenda, a different issue out here, but no one can discount the commitment to downtown and preserving downtown that the Boyd Gaming Group has done over the years. When everybody was running for the exits, they kept investing down here. So I think that would be an appropriate consideration is to delay this at least 30 days or 40, or 30 or 60, whatever the... I don't think that would put an undue burden on the applicant.
Can I make a comment?
Through you, Chairman.
Again, you know, I've been part of the process, and while Flynn's accurate in his timeline...
Excuse me one minute, Mr. Kessler.
Oh, sorry.
Is it okay if he speaks back to you then?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. You know, again, I kind of disagree with the timeline. Again, it's early in the process. Once stakeholders have stopped discussing and agreeing to disagree or just agreeing to agree, it goes through yet another process of recommending committees and ordinances that it typically follows. And by the time, if and when it comes, I don't know when that date is. And so from that perspective, I just, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Commissioner Schlossman or anybody down here?
Yes, Madam Chair. Is there a way to approve this subject to reverting back to the ordinance when that finally goes into effect?
If the city attorney doesn't mind.
No.
Okay.
No, no, no.
You can't refer to an ordinance that has not been finalized or adopted.
Thank you. Commissioner Goines?
Well, again, Mr. Kessler, you know, it's 45 days, so, you know, I think, I think we should hold it for the 45 to see what happens. Now, if nothing happens within that 45, you're going to come back and probably tell us that "I told you so," and then we'll deal with your issue then. But I think all stakeholders, it's not giving you a competitive edge. I think it's just trying to level the playing field so everybody's consistent. We have a group of stakeholders that have been meeting. Of course, you know how government and the bureaucratic process is. It can be slow at some time. But I think the fact that you guys are not open, I think, I think we should hold this one for 45 days and let the committee do its work.
Okay. I'm not agreeing to that yet, but I appreciate the comment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay, another option. Is there a way to approve this with a one-year review and within... I already see the city attorney shaking his head. Approve this with a one-year review, and then at that time, if we feel to modify that application to the current ordinance, would that be possible?
Mr. Scott?
Normally, we wouldn't do it that way, because normally, when you grant a review on something, in order to remove it, you need to make some kind of record to indicate that there's something wrong. Either they're not complying with something, they failed to do something, it's now harming something, and you won't be able to show that with a sign. The best thing to do is not to do that in the beginning. If you, I don't know what percentage these supergraphic signs represent as part of this sign package, but it may be possible, if Flynn's able to do it, is to separate the supergraphics from the regular signs, which no one seems to have a problem with, and just approve that portion of the application, and then have the supergraphics section come back within the timeframe that Council, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Goines was talking about.
Director?
If I might just offer some options, since there are questions from members of the planning commission about how to go about this process, I essentially see three different options for planning commission to consider. Option number one is to approve the master sign plan and variance as presented to you. Option number two is to approve the master sign plan and variance, and specifically noting a number of signs that you would not approve, being the large format signs. And what you would need to do is, in the master sign plan, specifically say signs number 16, 17, 18, 19, I don't know what. But you would need to specify which signs you're not approving. In option number two, that gives the applicant the opportunity to go forward with the signs that are not in question, which are primarily the name of the hotel at the ground level, the portico chair, and some of the other signs as well. Option number three is to hold this item in abeyance. So those are basically the three options that you have to consider. And again, I'll defer to the planning commission in terms of which you would like to pursue.
Thank you very much, Director.
Madam Chair, I need to make a disclosure. I see Mark Whitehouse sitting out here with Ultra Signs, and he's constructed several signs for me in the past. However, all my businesses concluded, and all bills have been paid, so I will be voting on this matter.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bowman. Did you have, or Mokboner, did you have something to say, sir?
Just a comment. I really do believe in a level playing field, and if there's a way we could defer the, we'll call them the oversized signs, so that you can go on with business, I'd like to do that. Otherwise, it's actually a hold for one or two meetings, and I'm not sure one would do that. So I know that consistency is the, there's a saying in here somewhere, consistency for the sake of contingency is not good. But I do more so believe in the sake of the level playing field, as mentioned, and the big signs are going to be testing that for us. So I will either go with the separation of signs by type or number or a deferral.
Thank you. Commissioner Goines or Fankis, sir? Did you have something to say?
Well, through you, Madam Chair. I guess we would, I would defer to the applicant to ask what would his wishes be. We could look at option number two and approve the master sign plan, and then note those number of signs not to approve. That way, you can move forward. My wish would be to hold the entire application for 45 days, just out of an abundance of caution, because all of these stakeholders have been meeting, and the meetings are ongoing. So I wouldn't want to approve a portion of it and not a portion of it without the full resolution from this committee that they are meeting on.
Right. And I appreciate it. I have the same, I just have a concern. I've been part of this process for a long time, and if I wait 60 days, then I face myself in jeopardy putting the signs up. And basically, you have to mark it before you open. I mean, that's part of the process, unfortunately. You can't just open your doors and then expect things to occur. And the opening for the Downtown Grand is, again, less than a year away. And everything that we do in turn that delays creating the momentum and the excitement and the energy is something... If I had a hope in the stakeholder process, because I've been part of it, I would, I might have a different statement. So that's kind of my...
I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said?
If I had hope in the stakeholders agreeing to a process...
Right.
And a recommended ordinance, then I would say to you, "Let's wait 60 days."
Okay.
I don't share that hope.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The signs that were brought before the downtown design review that were recommended forward were very specific with regard to the variances being an issue. I too have done business with Mr. Whitehouse, and, you know, what's been submitted is great. But I think the applicant's own words are the problem with the potential with the stakeholders. We have a multitude of stakeholders here that brought the same message tonight. And it may not be the message of the applicant, but it does represent a significant part of the community, and that's why stakeholders are brought together in these ordinances. But I do believe the hotel should have the commitment of the planning commission, commitment of the city, that is a positive moving forward. And I don't think there's much difficulty in this commission moving for the approval of the master sign plan excluding the supergraphics, because therein lies the issue. Looking at the signage of the property, the warehouse nature of the signage, the whole design package, in my opinion, it's only my opinion, isn't cannibalized by the lack of the supergraphics. The ground-level graphics, the variance for the non-illuminated wall signage, the painted graphics are really where the aesthetics and the street-level exposure of the signage and our urban fabric plays. So I would make a motion that we approve the master sign plan excluding, and I don't know which numbers they are, because I...
I could tell you.
The supergraphics components, because I think that lets you, you continue to move forward. The supergraphics are probably the least complicated of the signs, because they, from what I understand, they roll out of a big machine, and they're... But I may be wrong. I'm not a builder of signs by any means. But that would be my motion.
And if I can throw something out for an option number four?
Excuse me, did you want to say something, Mr. Rankin?
Mr. Kessler, before you do that, through you, Madam Chair, if we went with Commissioner Truesdale's suggestion, let me ask Flynn, could we then also, with the large signs, allow them to go up temporarily?
What the applicant could do is apply for a temporary sign permit. Temporary sign permits currently are allowed by the code for a period of 60 days per calendar year.
And let me just comment on one thing. The way that these supergraphic signs are installed, there's a framing system that would not be, it's very cost prohibitive from a temporary perspective, because it's over six figures in framing. And then I'll throw out my option, but I see Mark wants to speak.
Well, I just want to make mention now...
Excuse me, your name and address.
Oh, excuse me. Mark Whitehouse, 10 Research Lane, Las Vegas, 89111. Some of the supergraphic signs do not require variance.
Yeah, that was my option.
You know, that's, so there's six signs here in question. The north sign on the east tower, which I believe is sign 16, is at 20.4 percent, which if we reduce that sign ever so slightly, we would fall into compliance. Then the other two signs that are over the percentage are signs, I believe, I'm not looking at, 17 and 19, I think. Yeah, no, 17 and 18 on the west tower. So in reality, we don't have to file for a variance on the other supergraphic signs. They're compliant. So we're just talking about two signs. We would happily reduce the sign number 16 by, you know, 0.4 percent of that elevation to make it compliant. So we're really talking about two signs here that are not compliant. And that's just, you know, I just wanted to make sure that Todd knew that.
You could still, my option number four was to...
Yeah, this is kind of getting to be a train wreck. So here, let's back up a little bit.
I'll withdraw my motion for a minute.
You're going to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I have another one I'll make if...
Okay. Well, I just think, from my perspective, sitting here, I'm completely, I'm kind of dissatisfied, first of all, that we didn't know that these meetings were going on, or we wouldn't all be sitting here in this predicament, because then we would know what was going to be approved and what wasn't going to be approved, which is not fair for us, because we weren't informed, and it's certainly not fair for you, because the presentation has been done and that kind of thing. I think it puts us kind of, for me personally, in a bad, in an uncomfortable position. Because for you to throw out number 16, number 14, number 12, you know, that really is very hard for me to understand, because I don't see it in black and white. And I know everybody up here has a lot more experience with things than I do, but I need it more forthtold to me. Like, in other words, maybe it to be held just for, till the next meeting with these pulled out and put back in, or something like that. I'm just going to say that for the record. The other thing I want to say for the record is, the next time that we're in a predicament like this, I would ask that staff inform this planning commission of these meetings so that we're not kind of stuck in limbo, not really knowing kind of what to do for the applicant and feeling so kind of uninformed, which is not your fault, Doug, but just kind of for me, you know, to know. So that's how I feel. There you have it. Commissioner Goines?
Well, again, I'm gonna, I mean, we're putting options on the table. Well, again, I'm gonna, I mean, we're putting options on the table, and I think in my position, I'm here to serve the applicant. So again, I would prefer to hold it all until the committee has met and has come up with some type of ordinance, and hopefully that will happen within the 30 to 45 days. But again, I know you don't want to hold it up, so I, again, will go back to the applicant and ask what you think your wish may be out of the options that we have.
Yeah, and before Mark came out, I was talking about the option four, which was basically to approve all of the signs, the tall wall signs, except for the three that were over, and then we would bring one of them down. I can give you the specific numbers in a minute, but to basically approve, but not approve the ones that are over 20%.
I'm sorry. We're going to close the public hearing now, unless you have questions of the applicant. And we're going, did you have something to say, Commissioner Boner, at this? And then, does anybody down here have anything else to say? And then we're going to have Byron.
Madam Chairman, if I might, we just heard that there's two signs on the west tower, I think it's sign number 17, number 18, that aren't, that are not in compliance. Staff, can you verify that? I know it's probably a tough question to hit, but-
You've got to hit it.
If there's too many mics on. I'm sorry. We think that's correct, but, you know, there are many, many signs as part of this application. We've been working here at our station, but we can't confirm that at this point. But we think they are 16, 17, and 18.
And if I may ask the applicant, 16 is the one that you said might just have to be tweaked a little bit to come into compliance?
That is correct, and I can show you on an aerial to show you the maps.
And from the discussion I'm hearing from the commission today, it just seems that we're concerned mainly with the super rap signs, and what I'm hearing from my fellow commissioners is that we're all right with the other signs. And I think Commissioner Truesdale was looking at doing a motion similar to that. I would support that type of motion. You tweak 16 to get it in compliance, and you leave 17 and 18 off until this meeting takes place, so that there is a level playing field with the other stakeholders.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
No, I was going to defer to Commissioner Truesdale, because I think he had a solution to offer.
Well, I just, I'd like to be a part of this discussion, I'd like to be involved in this discussion, but I was just reminded that somebody within my office has entered into an agreement with Mr. Whitehouse, so I am going to abstain until I can review that agreement and make other business decisions. But as was reported earlier, this is a train wreck, and we will vote on something, I won't vote, I'm going to abstain, but this is the wrong process.
Excuse me, this is the wrong process? Oh, you left, okay. So Commissioner Goines, are you ready to make a motion on this?
Yeah, I don't want to be a part of any train wreck, so I'm going to get off the track here. And I'm going to motion, and my motion is to be inclusive of all the stakeholders in downtown, and I think because they are at the table, and I think they are working through this, it's not at the speed that your group wants them to be. And I understand you guys have been at the table, nothing's happened, so you want to move ahead. But I think out of abundance of caution, because this is a very important ordinance and a discussion, because going forward, it's going to set a precedence, not only for this property, but those going forward. So my motion is going to be to hold it for 45 days.
And I guess, Commissioner Goines, since we don't have a meeting in 45 days, it either has to be for 30 days or for 60 days.
And if I could just make a comment on that, I mean, I get, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I was just going to say, Commissioner, do you expect the full ordinance to be all the way through the system by that point in time, in that 30 or 60 days? Or, because it's going to take a lot longer, I'm not sure when their meetings are scheduled, but I think the normal course of a ordinance is like 65 days. And I may be wrong on that, Flynn, but it's going to take a lot longer for it to fully get through the system and be a fully approved ordinance. Is that what you're looking to see, is a fully approved ordinance?
Well, what I'm looking to see is a result of this stakeholders' meeting where all interested parties are in agreeance.
Right, but that may not be the actual, that may not be the actual ordinance that council actually ultimately passes. Even though they may be in agreement, there may be something that the council finds that they want to tweak it and change that agreement that the stakeholders had. So I don't know if you can count on that stakeholders agreeing to the ordinance.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. But you said you guys are about a year from opening?
Less than a year from opening, yeah.
So if we add 60 days, that's three months.
He said a year.
Yeah, again, you know, I've been through a lot of ordinances, I've been through recommending committees, I've seen him get kicked out of recommend committees, back to sky, I've seen everything. I've seen it being obeyed twice or three times at City Council, and I'm serious, the city attorney's comments is that in 60 days, you're not going to know anything with that ordinance, you're not, you're really not. It might be in form that's going forward, but it'll not be final until nobody knows at this table.
Right. Well, then, let me rescind the motion for 45 days, and then let me go back to our option number two, which was on the table, which was to look at approving the Master Sign Plan. We talked about signs 16, 17, and 18, where 16 can be tweaked to bring it into compliance. Is that something that, I believe your sign gentleman say here is, I don't know how small it takes to tweak that to get it there, but if you want to do that, I'll include that as part of the Master Sign Plan that's in compliance, and then we'll look at signs 17 and 18, and we'll hold those off later.
I would agree with that.
Is that, are you in agreeance with that?
Yes, sir.
Director Flynn, is that acceptable?
If I could just have the applicant confirm which signs-
Sure.
-per the submitted document exceed the wall, the percentage of wall area.
It is signs 17 and 18, just for the record.
Madam Chair, can you point to those on the actual overhead?
This is 17, and this is 18. And just for the record, it's the west tower, we have two towers, an east and a west tower, and it's both the north-facing and the south elevations of that tower that are not in compliance with the 20% rule. So signs 17 and 18, which are both on the west tower, one faces north, one faces south.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bonner, Commissioner, sir?
Yeah, I'm going to support a motion of that nature. I don't know if it's formally been made yet, but I want to get on with business. This has gone on too long without having activity, and this activity might breathe other activity, so let's get on with business and support the motion that's about to be made, apparently.
I'm waiting for the motion. Let's go.
Okay, Madam Chair, the motion on item 23 VAR 45918 will be for approval of the Master Sign Plan with approval of signs, or sign number 16, which will be brought into compliance, and excluding signs 17 and 18. And that would be my motion.
Madam Chair, if I might just clarify, the motion is on item number 23, which is variance 45918. This is for the variance from the permitted area of the signs, and so essentially what you're doing is eliminating the variance for those signs that exceed, let's see, 37% and 42%. And then you are requiring the one that is 20.4% to be 20% or less in area.
That's correct, to bring it into compliance. Yep, and that would be my motion.
Thank you. The motion has been made. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Goines's motion has passed, showing Commissioner Truesdale abstaining, and now we move on to number 24, MSP 45919. Commissioner Goines?
Can I have staff to reread this into the record, the backup on it?
Certainly. Let me confirm, if you will. For item number 24, to reflect your motion that you made for item number 23, what you would be doing is approving a Master Sign Plan excluding signs number 17 and 18, and requiring sign number 16 to conform to code requirements.
And with that reading from Director Fag, I will move for approval on item 24, MSP 45919, subject to all staff's recommendation and condition.
Thank you. A motion has been made. Please cast your votes.
Yeah, I just got to make a clarification for the clerk, I guess. I mean, the two signs that are being, they're not being denied, I guess they're being tabled?
Yes, sign-
Are we tabling those, those two signs?
With the motion, Brian?
If you deny them, they can't come back for a year. But if you table them, then they come back when the applicant's ready.
Within our motion, in our minutes, we can put that information down-
Okay.
-so they reflect correctly.
That way, Commissioner, they can come back at any time, once it's ready, once the ordinance is ready.
17 and 18. Thank you. Thank you. That motion has been made, and the votes have been casted. That motion passes, showing Commissioner Truesdale abstaining, and we're now going to take a five-minute, or 10-minute break. Thank you.[1312.23]
I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two.
I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. I'm sure you're happy to be seeing us. We'll be back in just a few minutes, starting up again. Round two. Should we wait? Be just a second. Let me wait. We're just waiting for one or two more of us, and we'll get started. Thank you. Ms. Gabby, there you are. We are back. Mr. Director Fag needs to make a...
An announcement.
Make a little announcement here. I'm a little confused.
I failed to announce the final action, excuse me, the action on items number twenty-three and twenty-four. Items twenty-three and twenty-four will go forward to the September nineteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you very much, Director. We are now moving on to number twenty-five. And it's variance four, five, nine, six, nine. The applicant is the Golden Gate Hotel and Casino. Owner sells Sega Hotel Company Incorporated et al. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow three incidental signs with setbacks of one foot and three feet from the public right-of-way, where five feet is required, to allow four incidental directional signs to be seven point twenty feet and eight point twenty-five feet in height, where seven feet is allowed, and to allow four incidental directional signs to be sixteen point eight and seventeen point eight square feet, an area where twelve square feet is allowed on one point seven acres at one Fremont Street, two oh one South Main Street, and two seventeen Main Street. General Commercial, this is in Councilman Coffins Ward. May we please have the staff report? Oh, and also related item number twenty-six, which is MSP four, five, nine, six, seven, for possible action on a request for a master site plan for an existing hotel casino. Mr. Rankin, may we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, three of the four signs encroach into the required five-foot setback for incidental signs. In addition, all of the, all four of the signs exceed the height and size requirement for incidental directional signs. Staff is concerned that the three signs that encroach into the five-foot setback would interfere with site visibility zones at the intersection of Carson Avenue and Main Street, and thus will constitute a safety hazard. As such, staff recommends denial of both variances and the master sign plan. Note, the DDRC has reviewed the signage and recommends approval of the designs. Please note, we did receive an additional support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, Mr. Bordell.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Greg Bordell, three hundred South Fourth Street, here representing the Golden Gate, Derek and Greg Stevens. This is the small final component of the remodel of the Golden Gate separately approved. It is, I said, a small component, but it's extremely important to the operation of the hotel, and we think in the public interest. Certainly respect the staff's point of view, but I would point out that the DDRC approved the design of the signs. There are no protests of record here. And the variances sought are designed to take care of what we believe would otherwise be a circulation problem on the property. In general, what we have is a situation in which we actually believe, I know this is unusual for a person with a variance, we actually think we have a unique situation, with all due respect to the staff, that constitutes a sufficient hardship for your action. I don't know of any other property anywhere in the city that has its primary parking facilities divided by a public road, which is Carson Avenue, which goes nowhere to the west and goes nowhere to the east, other than to the Golden Gate, functions as a driveway for them, that divides our south parking area under the new design from the valet parking area. And we are subject to at least three, and I think you could fairly say four, sets of different rules on signage on the properties as a whole. We have to deal with the Fremont Street Experience rules. And by the way, as to the frontage of the Fremont Street, all those signs were separately approved. And we believed at that time that these signs were compliant. But in any event, we have Fremont Street rules. We have Main Street special design rules. We have two different overlays on the two properties of what is and is not allowed as a non-directional sign. And the dividing line passes through our property, not between the properties along Carson Avenue. So when all is said and done, we felt we were dealing with four different sets of sign rules. One set for the DDRC, one set for directional signs, which are fundamentally what we're here about, signs that get people into and out of our parking. And another set of rules, which would apply to a freestanding sign, which we would have been allowed to have on a portion of our property, but not on another portion, even if it functioned as a directional sign, but that would have relieved us from the height constraints. And so when all is said and done, we thought we were providing a package long ago that was compliant with the appropriate rules, but the multiplicity of rules caught us somewhat short. And so some of the signs are a few inches to a foot taller than are allowed for a directional sign. Would have, as I understand it, been allowed as a freestanding sign. But a couple of them fall in an area where there's a separate non-wavable provision prohibiting freestanding signs. It can only be directional. We worked out the issues with the DDRC, which had left us in kind of a catch-22, where we couldn't comply with the DDRC and still comply with the standard rules. That was approved unanimously. We're now at the point of asking you to approve the signs, which everyone believed, not everyone, obviously, not the staff, but everyone on our side believed was compliant in the first place, and would ask for your approval. There are two types of variances before you. One is this issue of a few inches to a foot in additional height. And as a result of that, a couple of feet of extra square footage on the signs. And the second issue is setback, as staff pointed out. Staff, as expressed tonight, objection on setback was that it could be in a sight zone. We understand that's not permitted. There is a condition listed in the conditions here tonight that prohibit us putting any sign in a sight zone. And we accept all the conditions suggested by staff. So to the extent that a sign might intrude in a sight zone, we accept the condition of not locating it there. However, with regard to the setback generally, we're a little bit trapped in yet another catch-22. If, as many of the signs as we could have been moved to the required setback. But in a couple of cases, the required setback would put the sign behind required landscaping. Well, where you have a sign that's directing people to go into your driveway, it's important that it not be concealed by the required landscaping that we've separately agreed to. So we think there's merit in all of that. We think that this is, in fact, a unique circumstance. And it's driven by things which do constitute physical conditions not in our control, everything from the street locations to the special districts that we had no role in adopting. More importantly, I think we'd like to also defend the signs as being aesthetically compatible with the area. And in the spirit of granting everyone equal rights, as Commissioner Bonar pointed out a while ago. If you look at our designs that are in your packet, you will see that we, you won't see that we copied. I will tell you that we copied the designs that have been approved at Main Street Station immediately up Main Street. They're as similar as we can be without violating certain copyright rules. And so we're consistent, we're compatible, we're asking for no rights not granted to other people. We think there's merit. And if I could just revert to a practical argument for a minute, for those of you that have been on the property. The reason we need these signs is basically to deal with traffic northbound on Main Street that's trying to get to our parking lot. And we have two parking lots divided by Carson. The first parking lot is a south parking lot. And then across Carson, which, as I said, is a short dead-end street, but nonetheless a public street, is our valet parking lot. Cars northbound on Main need to have a sign that says, "This is the south parking area," so that they go there and don't get closer to the hotel and find that that's valet and they don't want to use valet. And I don't think any of us, including the public, want to see those people go past our property. Certainly, we don't, because they might not come back. But the public shouldn't either, because if they are determined to come to our property, we don't want them making U-turns in Main Street. And they can't go past Main Street and come back down first, because First is closed. So we think that these signs on Main Street directing people, "Here's our open public parking, our south parking." They need to have that sign to get there, and they need to see the sign that enters to the valet parking off Main Street as well, so that, in effect, they aren't lost in downtown. We think it's practical. We think we've met at least a minimum test of hardship. There are no protests. The DDRC approved them unanimously. We would hope you would do the same.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bordell. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I asked the Commission to do this. Think back ten years. And if Golden Gate, somebody came up and says, "I want to buy the Golden Gate, and I'm going to put in all these million dollars to rebuild the place and put additions on it and upgrade that to a really nice place. But I need some signs." We would have tripped over ourselves to get down there and approve it. Now they put their money up first, and now they're asking for the signs. Now they put their money up first, and now they're asking for the signs. And I just, I just do not, I believe that anybody that puts this kind of investment into this city and does this beautiful job that they're doing, I don't know if you, the last time you've been in the Golden Gate, but it is really nice. And if they need the signs, I think we ought to give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. There's no one else to speak on this item. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it up now to the planning commissioners.
Madam Chair, through you. You know, I drove up and down Carson. I was a little confused at DDRC because I failed to realize that you actually had a parking lot on the south side of Carson. So after going out and viewing that lot and driving, I see the need for these signs, because it'd be really easy to pass up that parking lot and then head up to the valet to find out that that is the valet, and there's nowhere to make a U-turn up until you get up to Main Street or Main Street Station. So I think this will clear up a lot of confusion. It's recessed back off of the curb by 10 to 15 feet, I think, because there's exceptionally wide sidewalks up and down Main Street. And so I feel that I could support this item, but I would like to hear from my fellow commissioners.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Commissioner Bonar?
I had a question, which you answered already, and that was the site distance issue. You've agreed to that. Are there any of these signs that might impair a pedestrian because of their extra height or?
No, sir. Because, no, sir, because of the required landscaping there will be pulled back off the sidewalk, in a manner similar to what Commissioner Schlotman pointed out. Not always 10 or 15 feet, but certainly off the sidewalk. Even though I showed you pictures of Main Street that are kind of in the sidewalk, we're not in the sidewalk anywhere.
Thank you. Mr. Truswell?
Madam Chair, if there are no other comments, actually, when this came before the DDRC, the applicants were very clear in what they presented, and I think it, it's fully warranted to approve the variance as requested.
Thank you. That will adhere a motion, please?
Make a motion to that effect, yes.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please vote. That motion passes. And also number 26, please. Commissioner Truswell?
And a motion with regards to item 26 is to follow staff's as if approved conditions of approval.
Thank you. And that motion also passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Bordell.
Thank you, and we want to thank staff for working with us and raising my level of understanding of this complex situation. And I, I'm under the impression this might be final action. I guess that's up to.
I was just going to announce that, Madam Chair, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. We're moving on to item number 27, which is, and number 27, 8, 28 and 27, variance 45964. Applicant Patrick K. Carl, owner, PLP Holdings LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow 33 parking spaces, where 36 spaces are required at 703 South A Street Professional Office and Parking Zone. This is in Commissioner, Councilman Coffins Ward. Staff is recommending denial. The item related to this is number 28, which is SDR 45963, for possible action on a request for a site development plan office for proposed 730 square foot addition to an existing 9,826 square foot office building. May we please have your staff report?
Madam Chair, the applicant is proposing to enclose a 730 square foot patio on the second level, which creates the requirement for three additional parking spaces. The variance constitutes a 9% reduction in the overall parking. There are no unique characteristics of the site. The requested variance is required due to a self-imposed hardship in that the applicant is requesting to expand the floor area of the building without providing the corresponding parking spaces. As such, staff recommends denial of both applications. Please note, we have received an additional support, letters after publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant.
Good evening. Darrell Wood, 35 Rayburn Drive, Henderson, Nevada, representing the building owner. I would request that you approve the variance based on a couple of conditions. The existing use of the building is a professional law office. The existing site right now can't accommodate any additional parking without a couple of things that would be not a good fix in order to accommodate them. One of them would be, there currently, you can see in the photograph here. There are, just start it off. Sorry. There are two driveways. The parking for this facility is predominantly underneath the building. There are eight parking spaces outside of the building. There's a driveway in and a driveway out, which are one-way traffic for the parking under the building. We could theoretically lose one of those driveways and provide two of the parking spaces that are required. And there's also an existing trash enclosure, which could be taken away. And my understanding is that there have been some conditions where curbside trash has been approved, but I don't think that anybody wants to see that downtown. And by deleting one of the access drives under the building, it would be creating a circus for trying to get cars in and out, you know, at coming and going hours. In addition to that, the people that would be using this facility if it were approved the second floor is actually for a mock courtroom. The people that would be using this facility are people that are already in the building, and there would not be any demand for additional parking based on the expansion of the building. And the third item that I'd like to say is that I've been to the building several times during preparation of this, and of the eight parking spaces that are located outside of the footprint of the building has never been fully occupied while I've been there. So I think that that, you know, again, I would respectfully request approval of the variance.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we will close the public hearing and open it up to our planning commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. I mean, I just read the backup. I understand completely what you're doing. You're going from a balcony, which, or the tenants use to add in a mock-up courtroom, not adding any additional impact. So we're three spaces short, and there's additional parking along the street, which we can't count, but that does add additional parking. And so I don't see how this is going to negatively impact this site, considering there's not going to be any additional loading of people, so I would be supporting this item.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. You said that this would be a mock courtroom and would not have any additional people coming in. Who would primarily use that mock courtroom?
It would be for the attorneys and their staff.
Okay. They wouldn't bring in mock jurors?
No, not mock jurors. If they did have a plaintiff or defendant that they were training for a trial, you know, those people would normally be a visitor to the building anyway, but would just have to be in one of the attorney's offices. So what this does is allows them more space, and as part of the design review, you can see that it can actually be divided into two, so that they can be doing two trials at the same time, and the space just would not allow for a mock jury.
Okay, so let me, again, through you, Madam Chair, let me just test you a little bit further on that. Is there, are there seats for a mock jury in the courtroom?
No.
Okay, so none intended, none would be able to even be there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. You know, if no one else, Commissioner Schlotman, would you like to have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. Item 27, VAR 45964. I would make a motion to approve this item based on it not adding any additional loading to that building.
Thank you. That motion has been made, and it has been for approval. And that motion passes. Moving on to number 28, please.
Madam Chair, item number 28, SDR 45963, site development review. I would make a motion to approve based upon the same findings that I made on the last item.
Thank you. That motion has also been made for approval. And that motion also passes.
Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Moving on now to item number 29 is SUP 45562. Applicant owner is Roger E. Woder. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed accessory structure Class 1 at 6233 Laurel, L-O-R-I-L-E lane, RE Resident Estate Zone, Ward 6. And this is in Councilman Ross's ward, and may we please have the staff report, as staff is recommending approval on this item.
Chairwoman Quinn, the accessory structure Class 1 use is permitted in the RE Resident Estates zoning district with the approval of a special use permit. Policy 2.1.5 of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan supports and encourages neighborhoods to revitalize through a variety of incentives, which may include accessory apartments. The proposed use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses, therefore staff recommends approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? If so, please come forward. Seeing no applicant. Mr. Farlow, are you the applicant?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street.
Wait a minute. We haven't gotten there yet, because I don't even think the applicant's here, so we can't speak quite yet.
He's probably not here because I'm here.
Oh, Todd, come on now. Okay, so, hold on one sec. Okay, this is in Councilman Ross's ward, so Commissioner Moody, is it your preference to move on without the applicant, or would you like to hold it until the applicant is present? It's up to you. Your call, buddy.
Yeah, my desire would be to hold this and get the applicant here. I do have questions for the applicant, so I'll make a motion to hold this for 30 days.
Okay, so the motion's been made to hold it?
I'm sorry, until our next planning commission meeting.
Okay, so we'll hold this till next month, and that way the applicant will be here.
I have a question, Madam Chair. If this is approved, is it final action, or does it go before the council?
No, no public hearing yet. We have to vote. So hold on a minute, Tiger. Okay, so the motion is to hold it for 30 days, till the next meeting. Okay, that passes. And then I'm going to let Mr. Farlow ask the one question to staff.
If this is passed, is it final action, or does it go before the council? Because I want the council to hear this.
Per the code, this is a standalone special use permit. It can be final action at Planning Commission unless it's appealed to City Council. I'll appeal it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farlow. Moving on to number 30, which is SUP 45805. The applicant is Warm Springs Road, CVS LLC. The owner is SCP 2002E-40 LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a rental establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale use within an existing 11,987 square foot retail establishment at 3290 South Fort Apache Road, C1. This is in Ward 2, Councilman Beers's ward. May we, staff is recommending approval, but may we please have the staff report?
Chairwoman Quinn, the accessory packaged liquor off-sale use is permitted in the C1 zoning district with the approval of a special use permit. The proposed location does not have any churches, schools, childcare facilities, or city parks within the required 400-foot distance separation radius, and less than 10% of the retail floor space is devoted to the sales of alcohol. The use can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with surrounding adjacent land uses, and staff recommends approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you very much. Good evening, applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Matthew Saltzman, on behalf of CVS 400, South Rampart Boulevard. We're here to seek approval of a special use permit to allow packaged liquor sales at this CVS store at the intersection of Fort Apache and Desert Inn. It's one of the few remaining CVS stores in the city that does not sell packaged alcohol. The company wishes to have this store have the same inventory and products available to its customers as other CVS locations, and is in response to its customers' wishes, seeking to have liquor license at this location.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this application? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it up to the planning commissioners. Commissioner Bonar, sir?
First thing, for the record, there was a call to, from a Ms. Chandra Cook, that she wanted to add her name, but couldn't be her, add her name in opposition to this application. I'm familiar with the CVS store. It's a clean store, it's in a well-kept neighborhood of residential uses. I don't see any distinct problem with traffic or parking or overcrowding, and if there's any neighbors here that are in opposition, I'd like to hear from them, but the only one that I have is this Chandra Cook, who registered her dissent.
Thank you. If no one else wishes to speak on this, Commissioner Truswell? No?
Well, I just, just for the record, in our backup, did you hold a meeting at all? I mean, was there a meeting held with the neighbors?
We haven't held a community meeting at this location.
Because I was very surprised. I've never seen this many notices of opposition to one of these applications before.
Seventeen.
And our backup has 17 notices of protest against the site, which is out of character, and that's the reason I raised that.
Commissioner Truswell, did you say 17?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, on the backup I was given before the meeting this evening, that's in addition to what was already posted, which are three. So that's, from what I can figure, 20 residents in opposition, and that's very out of, significantly out of character on these items that come before planning on these typical. So is, I guess, my question for staff is, is there something going on at this store that's different than some of the other stores in that area? Through you, Chair.
This intersection, Desert Inn and Fort Apache, is sensitive to alcohol uses in that area and have protested previous items in the past with alcohol uses at other intersections. So there has been opposition to alcohol uses in this neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, if no one else wishes to speak, we'll entertain a motion, sir.
Well, I hate to make this all mine, and I haven't heard a lot, other than there are some oppositions that are maybe historical in the area, but if other CVS have had this as applicant, and I'm sure there are other, we'll call them junior department stores that have such a facility as well, it's going to be difficult, at least for me, to deny the same privilege to the CVS store in question. So unless there's some fellow commissioner who would like to voice some opposition, I move to approve SUP 45805 for the special use permit in coordination with the staff's conditions for approval.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please cast your votes. And that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. We're moving on now to item number 31, 32, and 33, which are SUP 45910. The applicant is Las Vegas Speed Wash, owner, Two Investments LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a car wash, full-service for a car wash. on a request for a special use permit for a car wash, full service, or auto detailing in conjunction with a proposed convenience store located approximately 170 feet north of Alexander Road on the west side of Rancho Drive. This is in Councilman Ross's ward, and staff is recommending approval. Related item number 32, SUP 45911, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed gaming establishment, general business-related use within a proposed convenience store, along with item number SDR 45912, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for proposed car wash, full service, auto detailing, and a 4,392 square foot convenience store. Staff is recommending approval. May we please have the staff report at this time?
Madam Chair, the subject site consists of one parcel within a one-lot commercial subdivision for the development of a convenience store and full-service car wash. Project meets all Title 19 requirements. Staff recommends approval of these requests as the uses can operate in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding uses. Please note, we have received additional protests and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, sir.
My name is David Stray, DW State Architecture, 1223 Heather Oaks Way in North Las Vegas, and I'm representing the applicant on this. What we're proposing is a state-of-the-art full-service car wash with a waiting area facility that includes the facilities of a convenience store. It is primarily a car wash. They offer detailing, they offer a self-operation car wash, too. And we propose to operate this in conjunction with the existing convenience store to our south, who sells gasoline and the normal things, but they do not have a car wash. Our neighbors have indicated to us that they support this. We've heard expressions of support from the police department, and also certainly from our neighbor to the south in the church that is situated to the rear of our property, which is on the west side. And we agree with the staff conditions. We've deliberately proposed no variance or waivers.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item?
Madam Chair, before we hear anyone, my law firm represents the applicant on these three items, and so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moody. Good evening, Mr. Farlow.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. My issue is with the word "or." It's a car wash or auto detailing. If it would say "and/or," you know, that's, but "or" says one or the other. So, I kinda asked the applicant, which is it?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the commissioners for any discussion. Mr. Commissioner Goines.
Thank you. I just had a, I was just looking at your justification letter when you said "green building." How green of a green building is that gonna be? Because it just says it can be accomplished using environmentally friendly, common materials. Can you be a little bit more specific?
Well, we're not using any exotic materials that require a high level of energy consumption to manufacture or produce. We're so, I mean, it's a very simple building, but it's basically a masonry structure and with wood tresses. It's going to be completely insulated to use, to be energy efficient. What I forgot to mention before is that it's almost, it's nearly complete recycling of the water on-site. This is state-of-the-art car wash equipment. It's, it does service a great number of vehicles at a high rate of speed, if that's necessary, but it doesn't consume a lot of water or energy to accomplish this.
Well, thank you, and I commend you for using energy efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you answer Mr. Farlow's question now, either/or?
I don't know how you would detail a car without washing it first.
Okay. So, basically, it's both. Right. Okay, does anyone else wish to say something? Commissioner Trusdale?
I, just that I've looked at this site and very familiar with the area, I think if the applicant is willing to make that kind of investment, it does go a long way to improve this project, and I will support the application.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to make a comment? If not, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chair, if no other questions on item 31, SUP 45910, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations.
Thank you, the motion's been made for approval. Please cast your vote. That motion passes, showing Mr. Commissioner Moody has abstained. Moving on to item number 32, Commissioner Goines.
Item 32, move for approval of SUP 45911, subject to all staff's recommendations, and if they are approved, they may go on to City Council on September 19th, or may be final action unless appealed within 10 days.
Thank you, that motion is also for approval. Please cast your votes. That motion passes, showing that Commissioner Moody has abstained. And moving on to item number 33, Commissioner Goines.
A move for approval of item 33, SDR 45912, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Thank you very much, sir. Have a nice evening. That's it? Oh, vote. Thank you. And that motion also passes, showing Commissioner Moody has abstained.
Madam Chair, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number 34, which is SUP 45916, applicant TMX Finance Owner, Tyler Family Trust, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an auto title loan used with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from another financial institution's specified use, where 1,000 feet is required at 3900 West Sahara Avenue. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's ward. This is, staff is recommending denial of this item. Staff, could we please have your staff report at this time?
Madam Chair, staff finds the use cannot be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the existing surrounding land uses, as evident by the requested waiver. Therefore, staff recommends denial. Please note, we have received additional protests since publication.
Thank you very much. Good evening, applicant.
Good evening, Maren Perry, 100 City Parkway, Suite 1750, representing TMX Finance, which operates the Title Max Auto Title Lending Establishments. If I may, Madam Chair, and I want to give you a brief history. Title Max entered the Las Vegas market when it purchased the Cash Back Auto Title Lending Chain. They were not here, they, this is their first foray into the southern Nevada market to obtain entitlements. And after it opened and remodeled a store on West Charleston and added a lot of new signage and other improvements, it received notice from its landlord that Endot was going to be acquiring the store for part of Project Neon to improve the interchange at, or the entrance ramp for Charleston and the 15. Things happen fast, Endot now owns the property, and my clients are looking for a place to go. They immediately began seeking a new location to transfer their accounts and their employees, and as you know, it can be difficult to find a place within a geographic area that requires no waivers for an auto title lender. They believe that the building at 3900 West Sahara would be a good home, and this location, as you may be familiar, is just west of a Carl's Jr., and it's just east of a tire store. It does meet the 1,500 minimum square foot requirement for an auto title lender. It does meet the 200-foot residential separation requirement, but we are requesting a waiver of the 1,000-foot separation requirement from a similar use, as there is a business in the overall Food for Less Shopping Center that is a financial institution specified. We did give this business, we visited there, found out that it is basically a wire transfers service. You can come and cash your paycheck and then transfer money to other people's accounts. They have told us that they do not offer loans. I did confirm this with the Financial Institutions Division records, and they only have a license for check cashing. They do not have a license to issue loans. And under these circumstances, we believe that a waiver is justified. They, it will not promote proliferation, which is one of the major reasonings behind these special use permit requirements. This is a one-for-one trade within Ward 1. One store will be closing, this one will take its place. Also, it will not create the red light clustering of red light district that, that was a term I heard a lot when these were, when these requirements were being considered. In fact, we went out to the site and had a hard time even finding that other, that other location. It doesn't face the same direction as this building, and you won't, you don't see that as a cluster of locations as you pull up. As I show right here, we will be adding a significant amount of landscaping. Right now, around the edges of the parcel, there really isn't any landscaping. The entire building would have to be practically reconstructed, because it does have the open bays for oil changes that are, that were from the previous Jiffy Lube, but the inside, the outside would be redone. Full landscaping would be put in with, all the way around the parcel, with the exception of the driveways, which will allow access off of Sahara and cross-access to the shopping center. And it's gonna, it's gonna look a lot better than it looks right now. And under the circumstances and the interesting situation that Title Max is in, we respectfully request your approval and are okay with the conditions that, that have been the if-approved conditions. I have my clients here, they can answer any questions you may have. I'm happy to answer any as well, and we respectfully request your approval.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we will close the public hearing and open it up to the Planning Commissioner at this time. Commissioner Bonar.
Chair, I've visited this site, and that is visited with Maren, and the site itself is very bland. It's very, just sitting there, kind of like a nothing land. And with this addition of landscaping that shows on this plan, plus a remodeling of the building, because it's all doors right now, of nothing but overhead doors, actually, I think it would uplift the neighborhood pretty darn well. So, if there's no real conflict with another financial institution because of the nature of their business versus the auto loans, I think this would be a good addition to what is now a vacant building and put it to a good use. I did ask whether there was any onsite storage, the number of doors just threw me off, of repossessed vehicles, and I was assured not, but I'd like the applicant to make that statement, and any statement about hours of operation that they might want to put to the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Flingis?
James Plisik, 86 Ancient Hills, Henderson, Nevada, 89074. To answer the question, our hours of operation will be from 10 till 6, Monday through Friday, 10 to 4 on Saturdays. We are closed on Sundays. Can you repeat the other question, please, sir?
The, what you do with the cars that you do take in?
All, any repossessed vehicles go straight to Mannheim Auction. There'll be none at the site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Flingis, sir.
Saying that there's no other discussion on this, I would go ahead and, on item 34, move to approve SUP 45916, subject to all staff's conditions.
Thank you, that motion is for approval. And that motion passes.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to City Council on September the 19th.
It's not final action tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number 35, SUP 45933, the applicant is Eats LLC. Owner is The Great Wash Park LLC, for possible action on a special use permit for a beer/wine cooler on an off-sale establishment in conjunction with a proposed 21,239 square foot restaurant and retail establishment, with a waiver to allow 141-foot square distance separation from a city park where 450 feet, 400 feet is required, is the minimum required, at 420 South Rampart Boulevard, Suite 150. This is in Councilman Beers's ward. Staff is recommending approval, and may we please have the staff report at this time?
Chairwoman Quinn, the applicant is proposing a restaurant with a beer/wine cooler on an off-sale establishment used within a previously approved swap meet area located within an existing mixed-use development. The proposed use is allowed in a C2 general commercial district with an approved special use permit. The waiver may be requested as the use is to be operated in conjunction with a retail space in excess of 20,000, in excess of 20,000 square feet, and other similar uses have already been approved in the development. Staff recommends approval as the use can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the existing and surrounding adjacent uses. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you very much. Good evening, applicant.
Madam Chair, Commissioners Nathan Taylor, representing the applicant here tonight. We concur with staff's recommendation of approved conditions and request your approval. And just for clarification, this is in Tivoli Village, and the, this is the open market that you all approved a few months back.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Is there anyone that here that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we will close the public hearing and open it up to Planning Commissioner, Commissioner Saltzman, sir.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. What's the name of your restaurant going to be?
It's gonna be called View Wine Bar and Kitchen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trusdale?
If there's no other comments, I'd be prepared to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for approval, subject to all staff's condition.
Thank you, that motion is for approval. That motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good evening.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much. Moving on now to item number 36, with related item number 37, SUP 45948, the applicant is Shipping Containers LLC. The owner is 707 Fremont LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed 56,000-square-foot tavern limited establishment at 707 Fremont Street, C2 general commercial zone, Councilman Barlow's ward. Staff is recommending denial. This is also with a related item of number 37, SDR 45945, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for proposed commercial development and plaza with waivers of the Downtown Centennial Plan site planning and architectural design standards. Staff also recommends denial on this item. Staff, may we have your report, please?
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed development is located within the Fremont East District of the Downtown Centennial Plan, and will include a variety of retail, food, and entertainment uses that are appropriate for the area. The requested tavern limited use is encouraged in this district and is permitted in the C2 zoning district with the approval of a special use permit. It is proposed to encompass the entire site to allow flexibility in placement of bar areas, as well as to allow larger entertainment options across the site. Although the proposed development will consist of a mix of uses that are encouraged in the downtown area, the development is focused inward, centered on the plaza area, and will be entirely fenced to control access to the site via a single point on Fremont Street. Even with the provision of the required downtown streetscapes, the central focus isolates the adjacent streets from the development, and is contrary to the intent of the Downtown Centennial Plan to create streetscapes that provide safety, comfort, and interest for pedestrians, and to encourage a network of arcades throughout downtown. In addition, a major component of this development is a children's playground located in the middle of the plaza area. This design element is not compatible with the requested tavern limited use proposed for the site, and is inconsistent with the intent of the Fremont East District to have nightclubs with live entertainment and no gaming dominate this area of downtown to complement the Central Casino Core District. For these reasons, staff is recommending denial of the request. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepke. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Todd Kessler, 300 North Las Vegas Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89101. You know, I'm very proud to be here tonight to talk about this project. I've been a developer here in town for almost 15 years. I've never been so excited about a project before. This is a very unique project. It's very different. It is something that is gonna put us on the landmark, if you would. It'll be an internationally discussed project for a long, long time. Shipping containers certain, have a certain connotation to them, that certain, that you think of when you hear the word shipping container, but if you look at our project, and I'll take you through some additional photos here today that are, you'll some additional photos here today, you'll see that it is not what you think. Our project is actually a combination of both shipping containers and cubes. Cubes is a new form of modular construction that allows a lot of flexibility for different programming and different stacking abilities and different ways to set it. What's really great about that product is it's actually locally made. It's made by a division of Ahern Rental, which is made actually on the corner of MLK and Alta. So one of the major components of this project, which is going to be a multimillion dollar component of the project, will be actually made here in town, which is one of the great things about this project amongst many other things. You know, the project is unique in that it's a kind of a flexible urbanism. It's a kind of a new architectural term that discusses many different ways to use recycled, sustainable products to build a long-term, or basically a brick-and-mortar style building, but that whenever the future comes, when buildings get torn down, it allows that product to be reused again so that things don't go back into our dumps. This project contains over 11,000 square feet of retail space, 3,000 square feet of office space, 3,200 square feet of food and beverage space. There's a dog park, there's retail for a dog park, there is a caboose and a rail car that's a men's hair cutting. I'll take you through the site in a bit. There's 6,000 square feet of grass, and there's not a blade of grass in downtown right now. So people that live and work downtown are very excited about having a place to put their toes in the grass and to experience a park-like setting. You know, there's a couple of waivers that we requested to the downtown centennial plan, but I want to make sure that you're all aware that we went, worked with staff for a very long time on this project. Any of the waivers that were asking for, and we'll talk about them in a second, nothing goes to this building and safety aspect of things, and this will be a sprinkled product. There'll be sprinklers throughout. It's met all the fire codes, the building and safety codes, so there should be no concerns about the life safety aspects of this. Chris Knight and his staff have been very receptive to the product. We've been working with them for months about informing them and educating them on how this product works because it's quite different. I'd like to kind of take you through the project, if that's okay. I know that I've met with all of you folks before, but I think some of the people in the audience want to hear about it a little bit, so I'll just take you through a little bit. I'm going to put up the site plan, which is part of your package. You actually come in over here, you actually enter in through a shipping container. So it's a controlled access point. We could talk a little bit about why that is, is, you know, given our current fabric of downtown, it's unique, and we have to be mindful of our guests and patrons who are going to come to this park. And as you can see, based on our central theme, which is a kid's playground, we want to be very mindful of that. And so that's the reason why we basically secured it and encapsulated it through a fence with a main entry point that can be controlled. As you walk in, you basically walk into this event space, in essence. It's a very community-driven space. Everything that's in here is based from desires and wants from the community of downtown right now. There is a tremendous growth, as you are all well aware, of tech communities and other types of mini-communities that are going on. This space gives them an opportunity to grow. One of the other great things about this project is the downtown project, which is the folks behind this, part of their project, or their initiative, is funding small businesses. There's a $50 million initiative to fund small businesses in downtown Las Vegas. The folks that get through that process, this will be their home, this will be their incubator, if you will. You'll see a lot of new businesses that are started from our local friends that'll be living and working in downtown, and this is an ability to have them show their wares. It might be a gentleman who's interested in barbecue, he gets an opportunity to come forward, prove his, in essence, skills, and then as he grows out of it, he moves into a more permanent location. So I want to make sure you realize that that's a main component of this project. There's a lot of great things in here. You know, we met with children and we asked what they wanted in a playground area, and so we adapted our playground to their needs. It has a water feature, it has sand, it has rock climbing, it has lookout points, it has slides, it has all the things that the kids love, or want, at least. And, you know, we live downtown, most of the downtown project people, and there's a lot of families coming downtown, and there's been a tremendous need for a playground or someplace to take your kids, and that doesn't exist. And so this project, you know, fills one of the voids that currently does not exist in the downtown. And as you can see, it's the center of our project, and the reason is because everything's focused around you having a visual, a look, if you would, at your children as they're playing in the playground, yet you're doing your shopping, yet you're eating at the food and beverage restaurants, yet you might be listening to, you know, a poetry reading or something like that. This space will be programmed seven nights a week, seven days a week, from all hours of the day, free of charge for community-based types of things. There'll be toddler tumbling, there'll be movies in the park, if you would, there'll be concerts free to everybody. There's a lot of flexibility with this space. It's an incredible project. It's going to be talked about, and it's going to draw people here. One of the main features that's along Fremont is a praying mantis that shoots fire out of its antenna, and we've formed a partnership with the Burning Man folks. I don't know if you know who Burning Man is, but they put forth a large, two-week festival in Northern California, and they incorporate a lot of art and a lot of art that is in flames, if you would. And so we've formed an affiliation with them. We will constantly have some of those pieces of art here. And if you look at this photo, you'll see an actual image of what it looks like. The other key item that's along Fremont Street is the immersion dome. The dome is a 40-foot, four-foot dome, which equates to about 1,500 square feet interior space, and in that dome, it's basically like a planetarium. It shoots with a lot of high-tech equipment, shoots images up upon the ceiling, and with that images, you can actually take control of the image with a joystick and zoom in on certain things and move things. It's going to be offered to the children of Clark County for free during the day, and then it has flexibility to do other things at night. As part of our submittal, we actually requested some specific waivers, one to the articulated roofline waiver, and then one additionally to the 70% requirement along Fremont. And you can see what we've done, is we've basically set everything back so that we could have these attractions, if you would, the praying mantis and the dome along Fremont. Fremont Street, as you know, is a well-traveled street. The Fremont Street Experience enjoys, you know, almost 17 million folks just above Las Vegas Boulevard. This is yet another reason for them to come down. This is going to be, like I said, quite an attraction. I'm sure that we're going to draw people just to come look at the praying mantis, to come experience this new product that does not exist anywhere in the market. There's a couple of existing shipping container parks. There's one in London called Box Park. There's one in Brooklyn called the Cow Market. And this one, in essence, is, will be the Versailles, if you would, of those kinds of projects. It's very unique. It has a walkway that you can walk from, on the second floor, from this side, all along the way over the bridge, back through the retail and over to here. It has a lot of great features that are going to make this project very, very well-traveled, both from a local perspective, from an international perspective, from a tourist perspective. We're very excited about this project. We've been working on this project for a long, long time, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I want to talk about a couple of issues that were in the staff report. And the first one was about the tavern SUP and the controlling of liquor, with the fact that we're also focusing on kids. And we've worked diligently with staff, specifically business licensing for the past six months, and Karen Duttelstein, to form and craft a ordinance that will allow for this to exist. I brought my licensing attorney here today, who can talk specifically about our discussions with the city. They've been numerous. I've been involved in six or seven meetings myself. My counsel's been involved in more. We have never thought that we were going to just simply serve booze and not control it with the fact that we're having kids. We're working on the mechanism, the methods, the way that it's going to be controlled with staff, and that's one thing I just wanted to make sure you're well aware of. We've always thought of that. It's been on our minds from the forefront, and we've had discussions on it for almost six months. I've also brought my architect here today, if you wanted to talk specifically about the articulated roofline waiver or the 70% waiver. And with that, we'd ask that you approve, subject to conditions that were laid out, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward in an orderly matter, one at a time. State your name and address for the record.
I'm Zier, merchant at 518 Fremont.
Could you spell your last name for the...
Z as in zebra, E-R.
Thank you, Mr. Zier.
Yes, I'm here, the applicant have not contacted any merchant in the on Fremont and/or the neighborhood. I assume they're not required to do so. But as Mr. Kessler said, this is such a substantial and project with several, several unknowns. Containers, 14,000 square feet retail, and then one tavern license. Now, what kind of retail is there going to be in there? An office? Is that all one ownership or what? I'm here requesting that the applicant meet first with the merchants on Fremont and possibly even residents that are all over. There's apartments over there. This is going to be a tavern in the open air, maybe going on all night long, but definitely a meeting by the applicant inviting the interested parties to explain what is it and what's going to happen, and then take it from there, definitely at minimum.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zier, for coming down and making your comments. We appreciate them very much. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Mr. Kessler, this is nice. I think this is interesting. Will the buildings be serviced by, through that alley that we saw? Is that how they're going to bring the service?
Most services. Most services will be serviced through that alley in between the 7th and 8th Street.
That center island that I'm looking at there, is that going to have a sail or something over it for the...
Yeah, there's some shade.
Can we address the conversation with the Commissioner?
Can we what?
I'm looking at that, I'm looking at that center island.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Farlow, I let it become a train wreck. You need to direct the questions to me.
That center island.
And then we'll go, because we can't go back and forth, it gets nuts. So let's start over. So what did you say?
That center island that I'm looking at on the map, I was asking the applicant if that's going to have a sail on it, over it, for the, to protect the kids from the heat.
Okay, thank you. Could you answer that one question, please?
Sure, it will have a shade and misting structure.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak here on this item? Okay, we're not, we're not going to go back and forth, sir.
Just a final comment, if I may.
Quick.
Yes, very quick. This is a very large and project that's going to probably be known, like Mr. Kessler says, worldwide.
Right.
So maybe we should all be let know what's going on.
We took your concerns very seriously. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I just wanted to say for the record that I had the privilege of taking Mr. Kessler, Byron and I, to lunch this week, and we did discuss with him in detail, but we do have a lot of questions because the meeting didn't last long enough. So with that, we'll open it up to our planning commissioners, and we'll start. You want to start on this end? Let's start with, thank you, Commissioner Bonar, sir.
Yeah, I too have met with the applicant on this, and one of the questions that Mr. Zier asked that you might want to spend some time on is the type of occupancy and the, a little bit more about the incubation, that what it'll do to benefit the community and the downtown community in particular, because that was an exciting business growth model that I think is what's going to be one of the mainstays of this project. In addition to that, I do have a couple of issues that I'd like you to address. One is the safety, because if we're talking children and exposure to people who do have ill intent or just intoxication on their mind, how do we keep them from interacting? What kind of policing and safety issues are being involved? The fencing at the perimeter, I think, is something you might want to touch on, because you've mentioned these things when we met, and I think they all add to the quality of the product that you're discussing here, and so there's a lot more that you could bring to the table that you've already told me exists, they just need to brag a little bit. I'll stop there.
I'm happy to do so, if you'd like, right now. To address your first point, the types of retail and the types of stuff, again, you know, there'll be 3,200 square feet straight of food and beverage. I can specifically talk about the uses that are today, and these are entrepreneurs that we've, basically, who have come to us and asked to have a potential location there. We have a barbecue place, we have a taco place, we have a charcuterie which serves wine and cheese and salami, we have a pork and beans, which is somewhat, as it sounds, and then other types of those uses. Sure, sure, sure.
Mr. Bonar, you're...
So basically, what happens is, once you become an entrepreneur, that downtown project's going to be invested in, you're given an opportunity to begin your process here, and by begin your process here, I mean have a retail location to sell your wares, sell your food. And as you continue to grow momentum and gain recognition in the marketplace, and you basically now are ready to move up to a brick-and-mortar style location or a typical retail location, you basically come out of the incubator, get into your true brick-and-mortar shop, and then now you're replaced by the other entrepreneur who has the idea now for the next best taco, and he comes through the system. And so it's a lot of incubation and process, and that's one of the great benefits of this project. And then to talk about safety and concern, it's our utmost number-one concern. When we interviewed everybody, from the Zappos employees to the other folks who are coming downtown, security and safety is their number-one concern. And so we've addressed that in this project, A, by fencing it in, based on the existing conditions of downtown, and meaning that we have to keep a secure element so we can securitize the front of it. Additionally, because of the playground area and the food and beverage restaurants, we are going to have our own private security force that will be inside of the facility, maintaining a typical, you know, making sure that everyone's remaining calm and that things are working in that fashion. I believe I've addressed those items that you mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Are you satisfied, sir? We're going to go to Mr. Commissioner Flingus now, and then we'll end with Commissioner... Okay. Commissioner Schlossman, do you have anything you'd like to ask the applicant? We're just going to kind of go down the road so it doesn't become a train wreck for me. I get a little bit, you know, out of order. No train wreck tonight.
Not, don't have a lot to add. I read the backup information when it was across the street, and there was several things that concerned me with the messages on the outside and so on and so forth, but I think this plan is 100 times better, and I think you did a bang-up job, or whoever designed this did a bang-up job. So I appreciate y'all bringing this to us, and the only other question or comment for staff is, in the future, if we could try getting all the backup and color, because it's kind of hard to decipher what we're looking at when it's all black and white. And maybe that's not City Planning Department, maybe that's Clerk's Office.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm kind of excited about this. You know, it's an interesting thing to take a storage container and make it a part of this plan, and one of my questions, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Kessler, this isn't about saving money by using a storage container. This is about a look and feel of a unique product, and I think Mr. Kessler would agree that they're spending much more money by using a storage container than making a box similar in size or a structure similar in size to that. And it's unique enough, and I love the incubator idea of new businesses and revitalizing downtown We get a magazine as planning commissioners because we belong to the American Planning Association, and these come every couple of months, and there's really interesting stuff in here, and if you can make this work, I'm expecting you to make the magazine and maybe even the cover.
We strive for that. I'm sure that we can achieve that goal.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Truesdale, sir?
Couple of questions, Mr. Kessler. Where are the elevators to move people up and down multiple levels? Obviously, it's, I believe this is all... Obviously, it's, I believe this is all accessible to everyone.
Yes, it is.
And I think that goes along the line with Commissioner Schlotman said. In color, it makes a lot more sense than in the two-dimensional block, you know.
Sure. There's an elevator system, and I'll point it out to you. It's on the site plan, it's right here. It'll take you up to the second and third floors. Additionally, what you don't see, or you can see on the site plan, is some stairs as it relates to getting down. But this is a fully accessible site throughout the entire site. There's an elevated deck that sits here that basically is the tables, in essence, to some of the shipping container food and beverages. And again, that's a deck that has ramps, ADA ramps, all that stuff.
I'm sorry, we don't, for some reason, we're not seeing.
For some reason, we're not seeing what you're pointing to. Could we zoom in on that? I'm sorry, we can't see it. Is it?
We need the camera operator to make.
He took a break?
Yeah, it's not you, Mr. Kessler. It's just.
No problem. There we go.
There you go. Now you can show us, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. Right here is an elevator that goes up from this first floor to the third floor, and there's various staircases to get down. But that's the ADA access, if you would. And then the entire second level, like I indicated previously, is accessible through a kind of a walkway or a catwalk. There's other stairs to get down here as well. And then everything we did inside of it, the project, as relates to the food and beverage places on, just sit above an elevated deck, maybe just an 18-inch deck, there's plenty of ramps and access points for that as well.
And I do also agree, it's much more costly to build with containers. We're building a building right now with a shipping container, and it winds up being, it's not a matter of saving, it's a matter of the aesthetics that you create. I'd like to have your licensing person talk a little more about how you want to address the tavern component, because I think it's, it's very awkward for us to be sitting up here and saying, we want this kid-friendly environment, and the first we want to do is make it a tavern. It's not something we can do, it falls outside of typically our approval process. So I think understanding that maybe lets us come to some kind of direction or.
And before she starts, I'll simply say, we're trying to adapt to the current code right now, and that's why it's currently being titled as this. We believe the code's going to change, and I'll let her discuss.
I think we had that discussion already.
Yeah.
I think you need to turn one of those mics off.
There we go. Good evening, Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, 300 South 4th Street. I just wanted to say that, like Todd mentioned, I've been meeting with the city business licensing staff to talk about the liquor control issues. Obviously, they're not going to issue us a liquor license without the proper controls and compliance with, with the law. So we feel that the concerns of planning staff have been addressed by the containment, by the security, and so having the, whether it's a tavern or general on sale, you know, again, those are something that we're working with city staff to make sure that there's proper controls.
In fairness, how do I reconcile the concept of this grandchildren's play area and you wanting us to overlay that play area with a tavern use?
Well, it's pretty similar to something like Field of Dreams, where Field of Dreams has liquor sales on staff, but they are onsite, where people can go play softball, drink a pitcher of beer, but there's a playground right next to it, and there's batting cages. So there's similar uses Fremont Street experience.
In those cases, the tavern is limited to a building within the project. I don't believe the ball fields are blanket, otherwise we'd have a tavern use down there that was 150, 200,000 feet. So I think, I don't have a problem with the concept of what you're trying to create here. I think, I think it's out of the box, it has great opportunity. But the onus is on the applicant to show the city, the council, the planning commission, the residents, that for us to give a special use permit for a tavern covering a children's, in essence, a daycare facility, for lack of a better description, tell me how I wrestle with that.
And again, it goes towards licensed premises. You know, you're talking about the whole urban park being a licensed premises. That's no different than a general on sale license like you find at Cashman Field, or, you know, again, the, even though the alcohol sales are contained within a specific section, just like in this urban park, as well as like Field of Dreams, there are, there are uses that allow alcohol to be within the whole urban park. Again, that's, that's a licensing classification. We're working with city licensing, and they have that type of licensing for other activities in the city.
I know, but we're here with a land use issue. And land use, children's play area in a tavern does not ring well under our land use codes. So you're.
Well, and the.
You understand this and what the concerns are.
And the children's play area is enclosed itself. So not only do you have the urban park enclosed, you have the children's play area enclosed. And you have, like Todd mentioned, securities, personnel monitoring, you know, there's going to be signage that says, obviously, no alcohol within the children's play area. So it's not something that's going to be freely, you know, allowed in the children's play area. The tavern use is, and again, it's.
Then why wouldn't we be looking at a tavern use that includes the building structures where liquor would be sold and not have the tavern use on the, on the children's play area? Just, it's like if you walk into a station casino or any of the other hotels that have a Kid Quest or some, or like structure, that is a four-walled restricted area, there's counters, no one can get in there, and the kids can't get out of there without their parents getting them.
Well, and.
And this, this you're talking about, this, this open, interactive experience, but we're listing it as a tavern. That'd be, that would be like putting a tavern overlay on an entire shopping center, parking lots included. It's okay for maybe a special event that you do once in a while, but you're, you're asking us to do that across the board. And all I'm saying is, give us, give us how, how we can be comfortable in making that decision.
But like, I'll use your example of, of, you know, a casino with a Kids Quest within it. The liquor licensed premises is the whole resort hotel. So technically, the liquor allowance is with Kids Quest. But Kids Quest doesn't have liquor, and the hotel knows that. But the whole licensed premise is that whole resort hotel that includes Kids Quest, just like Cashman Field, just like Field of Dreams. They have a whole license that covers the entire premises. Again, the playground, although it's within the land premises, it's not going to be an area that has alcohol sales or usage in that area, because it is confined, it will be monitored, and they, the kids will not be allowed, their parents will not be allowed, there'll be signage and security to make sure that parents aren't bringing alcohol in to that area.
I still have a little hard time understanding, this is not Cashman Field, this is not some of those type properties. This is a retail restaurant complex with a children's play area. And why would we want to even? What I'm saying is, why don't we carve the middle out of this, out of that liquor application, reduce it down to where your restaurants will be, and license it accordingly? Fremont Street, we get use permits every time somebody outside a casino wants to put a liquor use. All of East Fremont, anytime somebody wants to put in a restaurant with a liquor use, they come in and make an application for a use. Here, you're saying this entire complex is a tavern. And that, to me, is, is somewhat of a hurdle when you talk about it being a kid's place.
Well, and I would just assert that it's really no different than having a four-wall building complex, except it's just an enclosed fenced area. It's an entire urban park, it's not just a restaurant, it's not just retail, it's, the whole property is enclosed so that you don't have that free flow of pedestrians taking liquor away. They're confined within the area of the urban park. And yes, there is a playground, because it is a park. It's, it's, has amenities other than just retail and other than just a restaurant. It's, it has, like you said, the dome, it has the concert area, so it's a whole urban experience with, with several different amenities. So it's no different than having a resort hotel where you have, you know, a showroom, and you have, you know, you can place liquor anywhere, you have a Kids Quest, you have restaurants.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, if I may, just a minute. I think Mr. Flengus has something to say that might just clear this up just a little bit for all of us, if we could listen just for a minute what he has to say. Done.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As I, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that I'm conceptualizing this correctly. You want a tavern, you want this whole place to be a tavern, not that you're going to be selling beer and wine on every square inch of this thing. What I've seen is about 14,000-foot of retail space and some office space, and I'm seeing a couple of places that will be taverns. And what you're really looking for to do is to be able to, and I'm looking at your picture here, to walk out to one of those tables, sit down, put your beer, maybe your food on there, and that's the reason you're seeking this, is so that you're free to roam the entire place. And then I'm seeing that you're going to take that kids' area, put that off limits to everything else, and I definitely see your correlation with something like Cashman Field. You know, you've got certain areas on Cashman Field, or even out there at the Silver Bowl, going to a Rebel game. You can go there to a place, you can buy your beer, and you can take it to your seats, watch the football game. You can take your beer, sit next to your son or your daughter while they're watching the football game. And as I'm seeing this is that you've just carved out an area in the middle of this entire thing that's going to be off-limits alcohol, and it's completely contained so that the kids can play. And is that what we're seeing here?
Yes.
And then the, the second thing, I just want to say, I like this project very much. I think it shows a lot of imagination, and I just hope a lot of people don't get bogged down with the shipping container concept, because there's much more to this project, in my opinion, other than the, than the shipping containers. So with those comments said, I hope this kind of clears up some of the things that we're, we're trying to get through here.
Thank you. Did that help you, Mr. Commissioner Truesdale?
I didn't have a problem with the project. I was trying to clarify the fact that we're going to put a tavern overlay on a project that is, by the own applicant's presentation, has a high focus on kids. So if, if we're going to do that, and that's what the council's going to do, and that's what, what goes forward, I, I don't think it's out of, out of character to ask a few questions, just to have the applicant try to explain how they plan to, to see this. Is this one tavern license, or is it multiple tavern licenses? Is there, if somebody puts a tavern business in one of these incubators and doesn't run it properly, is that the tavern license of the overall project, or is it that business? And you brought up the licensing concept, and that's all I was asking is, how do, how do you see this being licensed? Because I can go out to the strip, and I can open a liquor business in a hotel. If they're willing to use their liquor license for that restaurant, you can get opened.
Right.
But most, everyone requires you to get your own liquor license to stand alone. So there's, there's a control of who's running a business, who's operating a liquor establishment. And those investigations, I think, are critical to where, where this goes. And that's all I'm trying to get at. As I met with Mr. Kessler and Mr. Donner, I think the shipping container and the out-of-the-box thinking is a phenomenal idea, and I think downtown public safety has always been the major concern. People, they like the edginess of downtown, they like Fremont East, they like, even like the experience, Fremont Street experience, but they still need to feel safe. And that, I think, you can address. I, I just wanted, since the children issue is, is such a big part of your model, I think it's reasonable to ask those questions. So that's, I'm not unhappy with the project.
No, we understand.
You've answered all the questions I had, but I think we owe it to ourselves to at least explore.
Absolutely. I think Attorney Scott wanted to say something.
I was just going to say, I think there's a number of things we need to work out. I represent business licensing part of the time. So I think there's going to be a number of things we need to work out with Karen Duttelston and, and the representative's attorney in terms of licensing fees. Do we make one blanket fee? Does each entity that has a tavern pay a separate fee? So there's a lot of things to be worked out in terms of the logistics of this entire project. So it's not something we've done in the past, so.
With the overall caveat that there will be no alcohol in the children's zone. I mean, that's never, we've never wavered from that. If there was an easier mechanism for us to entitle this land, we would do it. It doesn't exist right now. And so we're adapting to what exists today, and we're going to commit here, we'll commit for the rest of our lives, there will be no alcohol ever served or allowed in that playground.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kessler. Moving on now, did you have something to say, Commissioner? Commissioner Goins, sir?
Yep, just, just sitting there taking it all in, got a little educated, because at first I had a little, some reservations about this. And I know it, I talked with Mr. Kessler when, when we met on this, and one of my issues was, and just doing some research on the shipping containers, was to, just the environmentally safe materials that's going to be put on the shipping containers, because what I, from what I read, you know, these shipping containers come transatlantic from a foreign country into the United States, they're unloaded at a shipping port, and then they sit there because it's cost too much, costs too much to ship them all the way back, and they're empty. And so then that led me to, to ask, you know, the paint that's on there is heavily lead-based, and are these shipping containers, for lack of a better word, stripped all the way down to the bare metal and then repainted again to be environmentally safe? Those are the type, type of things. And also, one of my other questions was the parking. I know there's no parking with this site, but I want you to talk about the parking and where our folks going to park, namely, the employees that'll be working here, and even those that will come downtown to visit, although I know we've had some parking spaces down there. My next issue was the concerts. I mean, there's outdoor concerts. I know you mentioned getting this dragon from the Burning Man Festival, which you said is in Northern California, but it's actually in Northern Nevada, out in the, what is it, the Black Rock Desert. And so, you know, and then when you mentioned that, and the type of entertainment you want to have down there, I kind of had a vision of, you know, folks from the Burning Man and then folks from the Electric Daisy, all coming together down here on Fremont Street for a wild night. So I, and I, and I want to ask you about noise, because I know we've had a couple of inquiries from residents down there with some existing clubs that after a certain hour of the night, you can still hear the music. So what's the hours of operations during your concerts? And in the future, are there any plans to take the fence from around this? Because I'm not a big proponent of fencing in anything. And also, let me just be the devil's advocate. I know you said that folks have to present a proposal to the group, and the group will decide to fund it. They will come into these small containers and run their business. If their business does great, they're going to move on. Is your group helping them move on to their bigger venue? And if you get a number of businesses in here that are not performing to their caliber, what happens if this center ends up dead?
Okay, I'll address all those points. First, environmentally, again, we're very environmentally conscious. Everything we do, we think about the environment with. And so they will be stripped down, they will be repainted, they will be basically reframed and started from scratch. And so there'll be a, a non-lead-based paint applied to that, there'll be, you know, it'll meet modern-day environmental issues, everything from the shipping containers themselves. The cubes, which is the bulk of this project, is brand new. So from that perspective, there's only 3,200 square feet of shipping containers here in comparison to, let's say, 14,000 square feet of cubes. The parking issue, as part of our submitted, we put a parking plan together. We indicated the number of metered spots that exist within a one-block radius, there's over 100. Yel Cortez actually put in a parking lot with 42 stalls.
The El Cortez actually put in a parking lot with 42 stalls, just on the catty corner on the, what is the southwest corner of 7th and Fremont? We also have reached an agreement with the Fremont Street Experience Garage for the employees of this project to park there. And we will offer, also offer, as indicated on the parking plan, incentives for them to come down and get certain discounts. We're going to be working with Neapolis, with El Cortez, we haven't finalized those discussions. It'll also indicate where parking is available on our website for this project, so it'll try and help everybody with the parking issues. The concert issue that you brought up, again, we will, you know, right now, we're, we are one of the main stakeholders, if you would, talking with the current noise ordinance that's being discussed, and it's been discussed a while with Councilman Barlow. We will comply with whatever ordinance is put forth from that, which will probably be a time limit constraint. This is not a concert venue, it's not, it's a community venue. I'm not saying that there won't be concerts, but from a community's perspective, we're very mindful of everyone in the community, and by that I mean we have no desire to have concerts at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning blasting music, which is what is occurring at some nightclubs and some bars in downtown. That's not the purpose of this project, that's not how its revenue is based, it's not from that perspective. So given the fact that how we're programming it and our compliance with whatever ordinance has come down, I think we'll be okay on, on, on the noise, noise issue. Right now, the hours of operation are scheduled for the weekdays to open up a 10 for lunch and then continue until midnight, and on the weekends till 2:00 a.m. The fence, you know, again, it goes back to our security issue, but it also goes up to a good point that you brought up, Commissioner, which is the flexibility of our design. And I'm just going to go back, just going to go back to the site plan and point out that the fact that these cubes are so modular and so flexible, that it would allow us to open up this side of the cubes along 7th Street. So you could replace the existing glass and patina steel that's in there right now and put a storefront and open it up to 7th Street. We believe in three to five years that downtown will change so dramatically that we won't have the same security issues that we have today. And if that's the case, then we'll simply start opening and embracing that, and we're ready and have the flexible product to do so. And so like, hopefully that, that meets your, your point on that discussion. Sorry. The bigger venues, absolutely. Once we're invested in that company, it's the intention for Downtown Project to take it to its next step. And Downtown Project will probably be the potential landlord for the new business and one of the many buildings and retail components that we'll be developing over the next 10 years. I think I've addressed all your points, but I'm happy.
Yeah, and just one more question to Mr. Zier's inquiry. I understand you said you talked to the focus group and you had kids in the focus group, and, and it seems like most of the discussion of the focus groups, centers, or the people that you call in from the focus group center around the Zappos employees and the, the startup business owners, and, and it seems like this is catering to what they want to stay in the downtown area. But what about those existing folks that have been there? And like Mr. Zier, who has come up and said, "Well, nobody's talked to me, nobody's sat down to tell me what's going on down here. I've got a business down here, too." But there are some stakeholders and residents that have been, been down there for a long time, and I'm just curious why haven't they been invited to give their opinion or just see what's going on?
Sure, some of them have, and some of them have done, given their opinion. I don't know Mr. Nazer personally, I don't know where his location is. We've had a lot of discussions with most of the vendors and most of the retail folks downtown, already Mamitas, et cetera. We have not had a town hall meeting, but I'm happy to at the next Fremont East District Board, which is an open public board meeting, where they talk about what's coming and new to put forth a presentation, and welcome to everyone to attend that presentation that wants to hear about what we have to say. And we went out to many more people besides Zappos, I just happened to mention that name. The downtown community right now consists of a lot of new people, non-Zappos people, and those people are, are part of this discussion. We have so many community events through Downtown Project where we talk about things, and everybody's welcome. We have various tech-related events, we have various family-related events, and at those times, we talk about what's going on. This project's been in our discussions for six months, I can't specifically point to a specific meeting, but anytime anyone talks about what's going on, we really concentrate back to the shipping container project.
Just one more, since this is an out-of-a-box type project, I'm going to ask you an out-of-a-box type question. It may sound far-fetched, but, you know, we're still discussing the, the distance with a food truck, but because this is a modular project, and you can pop these cubes out, you can switch them and switch them, and, and a food truck is almost the same shape as a container, you're not going to be entertaining plugging a food truck in one of those spots at no time in the future, are you? And calling it a restaurant?
No, it's not, not our intention. We are also, you know, very interested in this, in the ship, the food truck ordinance, and, you know, this is private property, so it's somewhat not applicable to the current ordinance, but we are currently monitoring, we're one of the stakeholders, some of the folks at Downtown Project, as of yesterday, have had continued discussions about it, but it is not our intention to make this a food truck venue. We have no intention at this moment for any food trucks in there, and we can't as easily move it out and move one in as it might think. There are Lego's, but they're not that movable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we're going to have Commissioner Goins entertain some type of a motion to move this along. Thank you.
Madam, this, this is shovel-ready, correct? This project?
Yeah, we've started actually fabricating some of these things in anticipation of the excitement that you guys hopefully will, will embrace.
Well, with that in, in mind, I'll, on item 36, S U P 45948, move for approval, subject to staff's recommendations. And as Attorney Scott said, a lot of those issues that we had concerns with, with the licensing and stuff are, right now, being discussed, so I'm sure they'll come up with a favorable on that. So my motion for approval.
Thank you, and that motion passes. Moving on to the next item.
37, S U S D R 45945, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendation and condition.
That motion is also for approval. Thank you, and those motions, those pass.
Thank you. Good night, thanks for your patience.
Madam Chair, both of those items go forward to City Council at the September 19th meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on now to item number 38. Are we ready, Madam Clerk? Yes? S U P 45965, the applicant is Habitat for Humanity, Las Vegas owner Sahara Crossing L.P. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a thrift shop, nonprofit, at 4580 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 120 C1 Zone, Commercial Zone. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward. Staff is recommending approval. May we please have a staff report?
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed land use is permitted in the C1 zoning district with the approval of a special use permit, and will allow the applicant to sell donated used merchandise, including appliances and building materials. The submitted floor plan depicts an interior service, service area for the loading and unloading of materials. The proposed use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses, therefore, staff recommends approval. Please note that there is an additional letter of protest since publication.
Thank you very much. Good evening, applicant.
Good evening. Troy Simmons, 7383 Terra Avenue, Las Vegas. I'm the Director of Retail Operations for Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. How are you this evening?
I am awake.
Good. And you listened to all staff's recommendations and you have no problems with anything?
It's great.
That's it. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this application? If so, come forward. If not, we will close the public hearing and open it up for the commissioners. Commissioner Flegas, sir?
Madam Chairman, seeing that there's no other comments, I would move to approve item 38, S U P 45965, subject to all staff's conditions.
Thank you, that motion is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes, and have a nice evening, sir. Thank you very much for sticking around.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on now to Director's Business, number 39, which is Text 46047, the applicant owners the City of Las Vegas for discussion and possible action to amend L V M C 19.16.2700 B related to master sign plans by revising the applicability of requiring a master sign plan for non-restricted gaming projects within the gaming enterprise overlay G O and downtown Centennial Plan Overlay D C P dash O. Districts intend to provide for other related matters. May we please have the staff report, as staff is recommending approval on this item?
Madam Chair, as Mr. Brogels indicated, that there are many hoops sometimes for some of our applicants to jump through. And this was in a extra hoop that staff identified as part of the master sign plans that you saw earlier today. Currently, our code requires hotel casinos to have a master sign plan and hotel casinos within the downtown Centennial area to go through the D D R C. Staff is recommending that we remove the requirement for the master sign plan requirement as they have already gone through the D D R C review for the design and locations of the signs. This would, once again, remove one of those requirements and would help projects move forward. They would, if they needed variances, you, Planning Commission would still see the variances, but there wouldn't be the requirement for the master sign plan. We would take care of those issues through the D D R C.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we will close the public hearing and opening up to the Planning Commission. Does anyone want to talk about this, or do we have a motion, or Commissioner Trusdale, sir?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I understand what the staff's presenting, and it would make a motion that we follow their recommendation for approval.
Thank you. The motion has been made to approve this item. Please cast your votes. That motion carries and is passed.
And Madam Chair, that item goes forward to City Council in ordinance format.
Thank you very much. Moving on to number 40, Text Amendment 46056, public hearing applicant owner the City of Las Vegas for discussion and possible action to amend the L V M C 19.6.0110B related to application requirements by allowing the submission of an application via electronic means, and that making such a submission is an assertion by the applicant certifying that the appropriate signatures and notarizations are correct on the submitted electronic copy of the application and to provide for other related matters. Staff is recommending approval on this item, and may we please have the staff report at this time?
Madam Chair, in 2008, the Planning Department began the process to obtain software, a software solution to process entitlements and plans electronically. After four years, long years of work, the city will begin in October of this year to take land use entitlements through the Internet and by electronic process. As part of this advancement into the 21st century, the zoning code needs to be amended to recognize that state, what state law already allows, and that is electronic submissions of illegal documents. The proposed technical amendment will achieve the following: indicate that an application may either be submitted in hard copy or electronic form, allow for signed, notarized, and acknowledged applications to be submitted electronically, and clarify the implications of submitting an entitlement application electronically. In addition to that, one of the questions was about getting your backup in color. We hope with electronic plan submission that all of your backup will be in color from now on, unless, of course, you get a printed copy, in which case it will continue to be black and white due to budget concerns at this time. But we look forward to your approval on this item, and if there are any questions. Once again, we'll be coming back with a formal presentation on electronic plan submission prior to the October meeting, possibly as part of the September meeting. We'll see how we do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rankin. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward.
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Well, this is where the bank's gotten a lot of problems, and they had to pay $45 billion to bail themselves out because they couldn't produce the wet ink copies when they were required. So who keeps the wet ink copies, and how long are they required to keep them?
Thank you very much, Mr. Farlow. We're going to close the public hearing now and open it up to Commissioners for comment or a motion at this time, please.
I do have a quick question for staff, through you, Madam Chair. Slight comment first, you know, we're, we're quick to talk about the youth texting instead of talking today. We're now talking about an electronic application. I think there's some benefit from being able to talk face-to-face with someone down at, at planning. Do we foresee any problems because that, that communication is, may decrease, or will it, will it matter?
Well, the pre-application conference will still occur mostly in person. We're also planning on moving forward into remote meetings through the Internet in order to have, we have a, conference rooms are being set up with cameras so that we can not only see each other as we meet, also, we're also working on technology to allow us to share our computer screen through the Internet with other individuals, so that a plan that we're all working on can be shared in many locations. You know, there's a lot of applicants that come forward with architects and engineers who are not from Las Vegas, and at great expense, they fly in to meet with us for a half an hour to an hour, and this could be solved by doing things remotely and electronically.
And Madam Chair, if I might just add to that, one of the concerns, obviously, is the, the mom-and-pops, the individual property owners who come in for an entitlement application and don't have the facilities to do electronic plans. We'll have available in our front counter area the ability to scan their documents and transfer those to electronic documents, so we'll still be able to help people at our front counter and transfer those to electronic documents.
Thank you very much. If we have any other further discussion, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
One thing we should always encourage, anybody that has a reason to do business with the city should come to Las Vegas and spend their money to, to deal with this.
Absolutely. We'll have a motion now, Commissioner Trusdale. Commissioner?
If there's no other comments, I'd move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, please vote. And that motion passes.
And that will also go forward to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. We're now at that special time of the night called citizens' participation. Public comments during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of the time on any single speaker, is allowed but may be limited. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On items number 20 and 21, Commissioner Quinn, you need to ask your husband about this. Commissioner Trusdale?
No.
And Commissioner Goins, and Dr. Scott, you need to go back way, let's go back about 10 or 12 years. On that, if you remember, that's a five-foot sidewalk there, and at one time, the, a lady was pushing her, her baby in a shopping cart there, and there's a curb cut there, and the shopping cart overturned and the baby got crushed with a truck or a car.
Oh.
Right, it was terrible. And that is exactly the same place that they want to put that ATM machine. I just remembered that. And you should, and, now, I've got a feeble mind, and my mind's gone, but you should have remembered that.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Farlow. Mr. Quinn?
Director, thank, I'm going to ask that that's be called to the City Council. How do I do that? Do I go through the clerk's office?
Correct, you would file an appeal with the city clerk's office.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow.
Now, the other thing on item number 29.
Okay.
Dr. Scott, I need you to look up City of Las Vegas, Ferguson's Farlow, Todd P. I think that was the, the, that, that fellow is the same officer that's involved in that, and if it isn't, we're going to go through the mud on that.
Good night, Mr. Farlow, we'll see you soon. This meeting is adjourned, have a nice week, everyone.